Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for your patience again. Welcome to our Maui Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, November 12, 2024, specifically in regards to the South Maui Community Plan. I believe we have Commissioner Kealoha is on. Oh, oh, perfect timing. All right, Director, roll call, please. Sure, Commissioner Dikos.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. I am on a boat in Pearl Harbor, and there's maybe 10 other folks in and out of the cabin.
Mahalo, Commissioner Hippolito.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm in my office in Kahului, Alou.
Commissioner Kealoha.
Good afternoon, I'm home and I'm alone right now, although my daughter me come in later.
Commissioner Ward.
Hello, everybody.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Luhon, good afternoon.
Chair Fair, yes, I'm here. Thank you. Yes, six out of seven commissioners present. Oh, Commissioner Lindsay is excused.
Yes, Commissioner Lindsay is excused.
Okay, brilliant. So on to our item B1 on our agenda. Director, if you could read us into the record.
Certainly. You don't need to do. Oh, yep, sorry. This is Unfinished Business. Ms. Kate L.K. Blystone, Planning Director, transmitting the South Maui Community Plan Advisory Committee's recommendation, recommended revisions to the South Maui Community Plan pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 2.80B, the Maui County Code. Today, we're going to be talking about the Growth Framework, Section 3, and I'll turn it over to Karen Komkowicz to, or not, to say anything that, to kick this off. Maybe that's all we need to kick this off. I think that you have to do testimony again. So that probably is where we started. I believe there was a presentation a couple of meetings ago on this item, so we won't have any presentation for you today.
Yep, and we didn't have any action last time. We just had time, basically, for testimony. But this being a new meeting, we are opening up for public testimony again. Just, Director?
Yeah, and just a reminder to testifiers that this is SubArea 1, which is Maualaya and Kealia, and SubArea 2, which is North Kihei. We're also talking about the areas of change in Maualaya, the central Maui base yard, and Maualua North Kihei is the, those are the areas for discussion. So please keep your testimony to those areas.
Yes, and if I can underline what the Director just said, in the interest of time and efficiency, everybody who is testifying, please stay on these topics. I know many of you have interests in other parts of South Maui, which we will get to in time. But so that we can take action, at least on these items, please keep your testimony to these areas that are listed on the agenda. So now, do we have a list of testifiers signed up?
Online, but if does anybody in?
Okay, we have one person in the gallery to testify so far.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Erin Mukai. I'm with Pacific Rim Land. I'm providing testimony on SubArea 2, North Kihei. We are requesting TMK number 2-3-8-008-005 be designated as industrial on the updated community plan map. Leilani Pulmano, who couldn't be here this afternoon, submitted written testimony at your previous meetings on October 8th and October 22nd. She couldn't be here today, but I do have that written testimony copies for you to distribute. The designation is consistent with surrounding land uses and will provide industrial lands for owner-users. Thank you for your consideration.
Questions for the testifier? Singnan, thank you. I think that's everybody in person right now. So we'll go online.
Okay. First person is Patricia Stillwell, followed by Audrey Lester and Bryce.
Aloha, my name is Patricia Stillwell, and I am a resident of Kihei. And I want to thank you for your volunteerism and attention. My testimony is pretty generic. It covers pretty much just the whole idea of the community plan, so hopefully it will fall in line with what you're looking for today. And that is that I think it's imperative that the Planning Commission, the County Planning Department, and the County Council keep the specific enforceable language in the updated South Maui Community Plan as opposed to watering it down using phrases like "where feasible," "should consider," and other such loophole phrases that are meaningless. We are experiencing the results of using the same ineffective language in the last community plan adopted in 1998. Infrastructure is not kept up with development is required. Developers are not including onsite and enough affordable housing. Sufficient roadways have not been created. In other words, developers have ruled. They may agree to impose conditions to get approvals they seek, but years later, they fight like heck to get them rescinded or traded for credits. And once again, we see no improvement to top issues concerning the community as a whole. The community spent more than a year, as you know, on this long overdue plan, putting it together. Please do not discount the vision and urgency the community feels to right the wrongs of the past plan and allow this new plan to be that, the South Maui Community Plan and not the South Maui Developers' Plan. Thank you.
Mahalo for testimony. Any questions from the Commission? Okay, Singnan, thank you again.
Okay, next testifier is Audrey Lester, followed by Bryce and Randy Wagner.
Aloha, I'm trying to start my video. Oh, I'm going to turn my light on, you can't see me. So mahalo to the Planning Commission for holding the public meetings and appreciate having a voice and expressing my interest and concerns in the future growth of North Kihei. So I wanted to talk about the Pealani Promenade, and I'm not sure if our first speaker was talking about North Kihei SubArea 2 and all those tax code designations, but I think we might be talking about the same area, but I have a very different opinion. So the Pealani Promenade, we want to keep that land designated as residential. Do not change it to light industrial or small town center. We've heard no one in the community come out in support of commercial at this location. Community would be living with the development and we need housing, which the residential ensures. So even if the current owner says it'll be mostly residential, they could change it to commercial on the highway. They could sell, somebody could have a commercial vision, and the Kihei will not benefit from a commercial on the highway. Kihei needs more housing. So mahalo for your attention.
Mahalo for your testimony. Any questions from the Commission? Okay, Singnan, thank you again.
Okay, next testifier is Bryce, followed by Randy Wagner and Johan Law.
Aloha, I just have a brief statement, mostly about safety. I'm very interested in having the road, the upper road that's contemplated as an escape route. I'm also very interested in having the greenway maintained as a fire break. The greenway has lots of other important uses, but the two safety things that I think are very important for the county to consider are the upper road as an alternate way out of town and the greenway as a fire break. So thank you for thinking about those two items.
Mahalo for your testimony. Questions from the Commission? Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Chair. Could you clarify what greenway you're referring to?
In the development plan that's, that I've seen the pictures of, there's more than one greenway, but there's a greenway at the top and where we've seen over the years fires coming from that direction. And I just would like to make sure that there's a good fire break greenway as part of the plan.
Okay, thank you.
I guess follow-up to that. At the top, you mean? Just to, I think I know where you're referring to, but I just want to make sure that we are.
East edge on the windward side where it's, where I think there's a very real fire risk.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the Commission? All right, mahalo again for your testimony.
Yeah.
And next testifier is Randy Wagner, followed by Johan Law,
Can't unmute. Oh, we can see you on video.
Okay, well, there I go. I got it now. Thank you. Aloha, thank you for your service. I'd like to remind this Commission of the vision and purpose of the Kihei Community Association. We come here because we care about our community, not for any personal gain or because it's fun. We're all volunteers, as you are, and we're dedicated to the greater good and have no financial stake in the decisions recommended here. Our motto is "A Malama Pono," dedicated to protecting, sustaining, and enhancing our Aina, Kai, and Ohana. Our mission statement includes, "The objects and purposes of the corporation shall be to encourage, promote, and aid in developing, improving, and maintaining the area of Kihei as a desirable residential community, to develop unified community spirit, to do any and all things to promote the health, safety, and welfare of residents within the Kihei area." So with that in mind, I'd like to speak again about the Pealani Promenade. Please keep the land use designation residential as in the CPAC draft. Do not change it to small town center. We have heard no one come out in support of commercial at this location. The only voices in favor of small town center that we are aware of are the property owners' representatives and the Planning Department. The Planning Department mentions in their argument to change the parcels from residential to small town center that the decision went back and forth during the CPAC. I would like to be asked later to clarify exactly what happened because it is not as the department implies. We need housing, which the residential designation ensures. The Planning Department's idea for small town center along the highway could be 100% commercial should the owner desire that. Kihei will not benefit from commercial on the highway. Our highway should not be modeled on mainland suburban commercial highway sprawl. It will further weaken our existing town center and will cause even more congestion. I'd like to speak again about the Kihei Maualua policies. Please keep the CPAC policies intact. Particularly, the policy of establishing a road from East Lopoa to Veterans Highway, Policy 3.5.5, is essential for the safety of Kihei residents to avoid being trapped in emergencies. The status quo is already untenable. Changing the language from prior to occupancy to prior to occupancy or concurrent with occupancy allows for pieces of the area to be developed and occupied prior to the completion of the full road, similar to the situation we have with the North-South Collector Road. KCA is trying to avoid congestion, especially with all the projects planned further south in Wailea and Makena that have no new road required, only minor changes to traffic signals. Please do not allow the situation to worsen. It is not, if there will be another emergency, it is when, and people will be hurt. Thank you.
Mahalo for your testimony. Questions for the testifier? I have one question. Do you think you could briefly summarize? How you were saying there were differences between the committee and the department with respect to Pealani Promenade? Do you think you could briefly summarize that?
Yeah, I could do that really quickly. In the draft proposal by the Planning Department, they say that the designation changed back and forth during the CPAC from small town center to residential. And it is true. However, the first time it was voted as small town center, it was by accident. The Chair of the CPAC believed that by abstaining, his vote would not count. However, his vote counted as for the change. So that was a mistake, and he asked to have it redone, and it was not allowed. And another member of the CPAC believed that small town center allowed for much more residential, and that's why she voted for it. She didn't realize that there is an option for 100% commercial in small town center. So those two people were extremely upset for a long time and worked towards having the new vote to correct the situation. It's not as if, oh, well, we want this and we don't want that. It would have been both times residential, if you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think so. Thank you for that. Any other questions from the Commission? Okay, mahalo again.
Thank you.
Okay, next person is Johan Law, followed by Harry Lake, and then we'll go back in-person.
Aloha, Johan Law, testifying on behalf of myself. So you guys are reviewing SubArea 1 and 2. And SubArea 1, Maualaya, I think, so in general, I'm in favor of going with what CPAC recommended and what the community wants. But I think in Maualaya right now, there's a missed opportunity for higher density. And so I want to suggest switching the triangle area that is already paved over to transit-oriented corridor. And that makes a lot of sense for this particular area because it's very central and there's easy access to transit, there's jobs, and it's already pretty high density along the coast. So I think the idea was to make it into kind of a small town, but I mean, that's not going to happen. It's not, it's super busy highway. There's a lot of commercial stuff. It's, you're not going to turn Maualaya to a small town. So we really should put density where it makes sense to put density, and that would be one such place. And then with Pealani Promenade, so I previously testified about the 150-foot buffer and having a walking and biking path there for safety. And I still really want that. And I think one way that would be offset, I guess, would be having TOC along that path and then having residential above. But I can't really envision people wanting to live along a really busy highway. And I think KCA's and other folks thinking is that it'll be kind of a nice streetscape, but it's a really busy highway, and it is like a mainland-style thoroughfare. So I don't think you're going to get around that. And so that would be a place to put either TOC or industrial or small town center along that roadway and have the residential be above. And then also keep those gulches protected. It's kind of like you can have the best of all worlds by having more density. And in general, that is what I support. So mahalo.
Mahalo for your testimony. Questions for the testifier? I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. You said you would support keeping the language about higher density in Maualaya? Did I hear you correctly?
Yes, but I wasn't thinking of any language. I may have missed it, but I was just looking at the map, and I think they switched it to small town center. Originally, in the draft, we did. By "we," I mean the Long Range Division. We had that area as transit-oriented corridor because it made sense for transit and being really already developed. And then they switched it.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Any other questions for the testifier? Okay, Singnan, thank you again.
Okay, next up is Harry Lake, and then we'll go to in-person, unless there's additional people signing up.
Hello, this is Harry Lake here, representing Pealani Promenade. I'll keep my comments fairly brief. We're in favor of a small town center. We believe it's the right transitional land use along the highway. It's also consistent with the existing approvals approved by the state, the county, and interveners. It's also consistent with adjacent land uses and would allow for residential, which we agree with. And to Randy's point earlier, it was kind of going back and forth. I was there when we got approved for small town center, and then we weren't, in our opinion, properly noticed. They reverted that.
Hold on, Mr. Lake, you're getting really quiet, and it's getting hard to hear you.
Okay, let me, maybe if I stop the video, does that sound better?
Yes.
Okay, great. I don't know where you lost me, but I'll keep it pretty brief. For three reasons, we believe small town center is the right use. One, it's the one consistent with the Land Use Commission, which was heavily litigated and signed off on by the county, the state, and interveners, many of which were members of KCA.
Sorry, hold on one second. Do you think you could call in instead?
Yeah, 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 let me try that. Okay, you can move on now, I'll comment.
Okay, thank you. We'll come back to him when he's back on.
Okay, so there's no one else signed up for online?
I think somebody just wrote in.
Yes, someone, Mike Moran.
Mike Moran? I think you said you're signing up to testify? Mike Moran, are you online?
Yes, Chair, I think I finally got my microphone on. I'll try once more for the video, otherwise, there we are. Okay, patience. Mike Moran, CPAC member. Thank you for your volunteer service to the Commissioners. And I just, I'm also, I've been on the KCA for over a decade, and I just want to correct something that Mr. Lake just said. KCA was not an intervener. We were not anyway part of it. So to say that we were is untrue. We were not any part of the intervention. We were certainly frequent testifiers at the Land Commission on the issue. And of course, I was on the CPAC, and I was the one that, after the mistake was made by a couple of my fellow Commissioners, that made the motion to bring it back to what we wanted, the Pealani Promenade to be residential. The last several weeks, I have conversed with many members of the community, and as has been said before me, no one is looking for commercial there. And to say, we'll put the small town center in there, and we can have residential in there, doesn't mean we must have residential in there. We have been burned before by promises that were unfulfilled. We like residential, which requires homes to be put in there. That's what our community wants. We don't need more commercial. We have a few more commercial areas that have tons of vacancies. So we certainly don't need any more up there and any congestion. Also, on the inclusion of the upper highway, again, from the community, I've heard many, many people, nobody's saying we don't want that, saying, well, it'll take time, but we certainly need it. We're going to have 4,000 or 5,000 more residents in Wailea and Makera, further jamming our escape route. As been said before many times, the Pealani Highway is a cul-de-sac. There's no way out. So that's your only escape. We need another escape route. We know South Kihei Road will be underwater soon. One other item is, thank you, is this concept of allowing permitting building in this lurex, which seems, I don't know what the right term is, but to say, well, we already have some there. So let's repeat the mistake. We all know what that insanity definition is. No more building in this lurex. We can't stop what's there, but no additional building there, please. Mahalo for the opportunity.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you at the very end. No additional building, where were you saying?
This lurex.
Okay, okay, got it.
It's what the, oh, the city of Hawaii area.
Yes, thank you. Any questions for the testifier? Commissioner Dikos.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moran, for your testimony. I hope you guys can hear me. Clarification, I know there's a lot of concern about Pealani Promenade, about being designated small town because, as other testifiers have stated, you could do 100% commercial. Just clarifying, do you have, if you did 80, you know, I think even Mr. Lake will clarify from his testimony, but if they were really pushing for 80/20, which is in the plan, could you designate 80% of that area residential and 20%? You know, maybe it's not small town, but maybe something that provides the commercial for the rest of the 80. I don't know if that's a neighborhood center.
Yes, Dr. Dikos, our fear, as I tried to express, is that what we have seen, and I'm stereotyping developers, it doesn't mean all developers, but many of our developers make promises and to get approval, and then they change the promise, they back out, they ask for modifications, and that's our fear. They can, anybody can say, oh, this is what we'll do. Just go ahead and approve it for us. Then when we get the approval, anything can happen. They can sell the land to somebody else, where if it's residential, it has to be mostly housing in here required. No promises as a requirement. Thank you for the question, Dr. Dikos.
Okay, but if it was, if 80% of those lands were officially designated residential, that would protect the 80%?
Yes, I think that would be reasonable because my understanding, with residential designation, you're still going to allow some commercial in here, something reasonable to allow those residents to not have to cross the highway to demand or go to maybe a hardware store. So even residential, it's not 100% residential. So if there was some kind of required, 80 is the right percent, if there was something reasonable was required, I would say the community deal with it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moran. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further questions for the testifier? I do have a follow-up question. So we just heard a testifier today and one at our last meeting who said they are Kihei residents and they would like to have some commercial within Pealani Promenade. And the one we just heard from said they would actually like small town center along the highway. But we heard from you that like, nobody wants it. So what is your response to that?
I can say, again, this is just saying, but I take, you know, we have the online site next door. When we posed that question on there, every person who responded on there said, we don't want commercial. We want homes. We need homes. We don't need more stores. We don't need more commercial there. So I, and as I said, with residential, we're not saying 100% residential because if there's something reasonable, you could have some commercial in there, which would be practical, not necessarily 100%. But again, as I said, all the people that I have from, that have submitted input to K C A, talked to me personally and on that next door site. Everyone I saw, maybe I missed one, but I didn't see anybody asking for a commercial.
And sorry, just to clarify, this is K C A's Nextdoor site?
No, no, Nextdoor is a
An app, right?
Yeah, it's an online site. It's not like maybe you would call it a local Facebook type of thing. It's, I'm the least technical person to explain this, but it's something that it's an online site that is open to the public to offer comments.
Okay, and so that's what you're saying based on, this is where your statements are coming from? Is that the statement you're saying that the community does not want commercial in that location is based on this sampling?
That being one source. The other source is what input comes into the Kihei Community Association. The third source is, because I have a pretty big mouth, people come to me and ask me or tell me what they don't want to testify, but they ask me if I tell them this is what we want. Again, this is all hearsay. It's not official, you know, statistics that we could show. But this is what I heard. This is what the CPAC, which is made up of 100% South Maui residents, agreed to.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the testifier? Okay, Singnan, mahalo again.
Shall we try Harry Lake again?
Sure.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, great. Mahalo. And mahalo again for all your hard work. Again, I'll try to keep it real simple. You know, testified on this before. But small town center is appropriate use for a couple of reasons. One, it's consistent with the existing approvals with the state, county and their interveners. And to clarify, that Mike was right, I was, I may have misspoken. I was just saying that there are members of the interveners that happen to also be K C A members. So but they were in no way were representing K C A as a whole. And so, but they're definitely members of K C A. And Mike was, like he mentioned, was heavily involved as well. The small town center will also be consistent with adjacent properties along the highway. And then third, it would also allow for residential into a couch of pre-testimony. It would actually allow it to have housing to occur faster. I think something got echoed, but and then to the point, we were there.
Your computer?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I don't know what happened there. And like we said, when we left the plan, the meetings, when there was actually on the agenda, we left with small town center. And then, and then it changed without, in our opinion, proper notice. So we, but then it was always reassured to us that we'd have another opportunity like we are having now to discuss the small town center designation. And then on a more personal note, I would just like to say, development is just hard. It is like really hard. And so, and so we're trying to navigate through all the approvals that we've gotten and worked hard for, for many, many years. And we do want to deliver housing. And so we're trying to find the right way to do it. And so, and we're trying to remove all the hurdles to deliver housing. And so I just let you know, we're working really hard to deliver this. And so it's just difficult and it's, and we wouldn't do it unless it was important. And so we do believe in walkability. We believe that there should be some walkability, Malka of Pealani Highway and not all the walkable, you know, areas should only be Makai of Pealani Highway. That's the one thing we've heard is hey, can we walk from the high school to things? And all you have to do is just be at Ulalani across the street from Baldwin High School and just see the flood of kids just leaving the high school to go to walkable areas to either work, hang out, do things like that. And we believe Pealani Promenade or Kauna Hulu would be a nice walkable area next to the new high school and also give a walkable area for all the existing housing in the area of which we would like to supply additional housing for. Mahalo, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions for the testifier? Commissioner Dicos?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Lake, for your testimony. I think last time I asked you the question, your preference would be 80/20, 80% residential. Sounds like in this testimony, you would try really hard to build homes. So it sounds like it's all focused on homes primarily. So you have an issue with residential zoning?
The issue we have is, and the attorneys can speak to this probably very, and I can't, is just consistency. And so right now, our designation is light industrial. And so small town center allows for that, but also allows for residential. Residential doesn't allow for light industrial. Therefore, we believe that residential would be inconsistent with existing approvals, which were, you know, hardly negotiated for over 10 years for. And so that's it. And so I think, you know, given a mixture of uses and this could be interpretation from L U C, we believe if it's 50/50, we would check the box. If it's 60/40, does that residential to light industrial or commercial, does that still check the box? We believe it would, but then that would, you know, need an interpretation from L U C, which we hope to achieve as we make progress. Residential is exactly, the best demand is for residential, so I mean, there's no.
Are you, are you saying that you don't, you won't need a zoning change if you do small town center? A land use designation change?
That's what our attorneys are saying.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Lake.
Thank you. And that could be held as a resource if needed. I'll hang on.
Okay, right. But we have to do that after testimony or we do that now?
After testimony.
Mr. Hopper, are you on?
Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yes. What is the process for having him stay on as a resource person?
Sorry. We don't generally do that. We don't really have a specific rule for it. What's the, I mean, maybe it's better to just have that question sent through planning department staff. I mean, what did you, what did you want him to present on here? If you have a question, maybe ask him now. Or, you know, have those questions ready and you could maybe have planning staff submit that. I think that's maybe a little bit better because the resource person keeping them around, I mean, if you have an applicant, that's one thing. That's a little bit easier to do, but as far as a resource person in a general public testimony situation, it's not really something we do at the planning commission.
Well, this is, this is in regards to Mr. Harry Lake, who is the Pealani Promenade developer?
Right. I mean, if you have questions for him as a public testifier, I think that's fine. I mean, otherwise, I think we would normally be sending him questions. If staff had a question for him or if you had, you know, questions now, I think that's more appropriate. But, you know, the council process has a rule that talks about you have to have a special expertise and things like that. And I mean, we can, we can look at sort of establishing a process for the department. But I think I'd encourage you to ask the questions now. Or, you know, if we want to have a specific presentation from that person, have that at a later meeting as well. But we traditionally have not had resource people as public testifiers stay on similar to how the county council does in this case. So I don't want to necessarily on the fly come up with a process for that. So to the extent you can ask him his questions now, I think that's good. To the extent you have questions for him that he can get back to you on, I think that's, that's fine too. But we generally haven't been designating public testifiers as resource people at the planning commission.
Even if he is the representative for the developer and we have that, well, that development is on our agenda as one of the areas of change?
I mean, I would again ask you to try to ask those questions now. And if there's something you don't get answered, have that for the department to discuss with him in a future date. Or, you know, or to have that information given to you. But I mean, what's, if there's questions now, you can ask them if you've got other, you know, information there. I think that's, that's how you would, how you would do that.
But if like, because what if we, you know, hopefully we'll have time to get into discussion on this in this meeting. And as we're discussing, as we are discussing our options and maybe whatever changes we might want to make to the plan to ask questions related to that of the developer?
Yeah, I mean, I could. I'm just saying how we have traditionally done this at the planning commission. If you've got questions for the developer when it comes up, I think you can have those questions noted. And I think as we have in other cases and then have them, you know, get back to us rather than have certain people kept on as resource people. I can look at how other boards and commissions may have done this, but I'm really not familiar with the process of this being done as far as a, as a plan review, rather than as a, you know, normally that's agendized that has that project on there. And I suppose we do have an agenda that has these, these different sections there. But, you know, traditionally, we haven't, haven't done it that way. We want to take a recess and see if we could figure something out, but that's not something we, that I'm familiar with doing at the planning commission level.
We have something from the director and then Commissioner Dicos is raising his hand after.
Yeah, I'm just looking back or thinking back to the West Maui Community Plan Process and when this was in front of Planning Commission before. During the CPAC process, there was a presentation given by all the major landowners who had projects in that area. And the CPAC was able to ask them questions. I think a similar thing happened in South Maui. And that was the opportunity for the developer to have this conversation. My concern with keeping him on as a resource is that we would probably want to offer that to literally every other thing. And I'm not sure that that's an appropriate use of the commission's time. I do think though, that what you could do in lieu of having him be a resource, and we can also take a recess as Mr. Hopper recommended or suggested. In lieu of that, you could just say, you know, my questions for the project proponent are, you know, this, 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 and this. And then he could certainly write a letter back to the commission explaining the answers to those questions and show up and testify at the next, the next meeting, assuming that these items are still on that agenda. So that's an alternative solution.
Okay, Commissioner Dicos?
Yeah, I was just going to share my concerns also, just having a developer as a resource. We know how these community plans go, right? They go through the CPAC and then the developers kind of hope they can get something back. So if we were to have them as a resource, we'd certainly want to have some representation from the community as well. So I have some concerns with having them as a resource.
And Chair, I will say that I understand why you want to get that information about with the representations from the landowner on the potential designations. I do think that's an important thing to have as a, as a matter of record. But I'm just saying, leaving them on as a resource person in perpetuity is generally not something we've done with public testifiers in the past. Though, as I said, we could look for sort of establishing a protocol for that. But it hadn't been done that way in the past. But obviously, having developer or landowner input on, on a proposal can be important if that's something the commission wants.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Dicos?
Yeah, a question for Mr. Lake?
Yep, yep.
You mentioned that you don't think there needs to be a land use change to do small town center, but if there was, then I presume you'd be agreeable to residential. Because that they would, both of them would have to go through a land use change. And residential would align more with the 80% that you support, correct? Does that sound correct?
I would check. Our main goal is consistency. And so that's to the extent that there is no designation that's consistent. Then I guess, I guess I could, I could see your point. Our goal is that of the designations that are allowed for small town centers, the one that's most most aligned. And so that's, that's our main reason. We're trying to, we're trying to get started in delivering the homes. And Cow Chip Chasers advises that small town center is, is a designation that will allow us to actually proceed under the current approvals.
Okay, but if, if that also needed a land use designation change, your preference would be residential? That way, you could solidify that 80% goal of your property owner?
We would like residential, we do like residential. We would like it predominantly residential. We don't want it exclusively residential because I, we just feel like we need some amenities to service the people in North Kihei and also Malka of the highway. And right now, there's literally nothing there. And so, I mean, to Mike Moran's point, you know, the hardware store, maybe a small grocery store, a restaurant, things that families would want to walk to or maybe high schoolers would want to work at in order to, you know, maybe even like a Sylvan Learning Center or things like that. Like there, there's things like that that we think could supplement, you know, the existing high school and create a sense of place and a sense of community, which is what we've been hearing. And small town center does that. I mean, that's the exact designation you would put along a highway, in our opinion.
Well, I was going to end it there, but since you went, I think the concern is small town center. You could do 100% commercial. We know the landowner wanted the mega mall before. There's, you know, there's no, so I keep hearing you'd love 80%. So that's what I was focused on. It does seem to be aligned with this. So if there's a way to get the 80% residential, it sounds like you're in support.
Yeah, we, there was once an application to the four parcels being residential. That's exactly how we intend to develop it anyway, along those lines. I mean, as you peel away from the highway and go towards Malka, it should, it should transition to exclusive residential.
What percentage was that of the total parcel, the two?
I think, I think it was essentially half. I mean, but we do more than that. But just the way the existing TMKs are laid out, there's four major TMKs. And the ones most Malka were going to be residential anyway, I think. So the small town center will allow us to basically fulfill that vision pretty easily.
Thank you, Mr. Lake.
No, thank you. Thank you.
Any further questions from the commission? Okay, Singnan, thank you again for your testimony.
Mahalo, Chair.
Okay, next person is John Laney, followed by Adele and then Tom Crowley.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Ah, good. Uh, my name is John Laney and, uh, I would like to ask, uh, you all to stand with South Maui uh, in, um, keeping the strong language in the South Maui Community Plan. I'd like to talk about a couple of things. The first is the North Kihei development, which, um, we believe is unworkable without the South Maui, uh, Community Plan's policies requiring the complete Malka Collector Road to be operational, right? Prior to the occupancy of the homes, uh, you know, uh, with fires and every, you know, we have one basic way to get in and out of Kihei, which is a P'elani. And, um, the plan is asking and, and requiring that we have another access road uh, before we build a bunch of houses that are then going to feed to the P'elani. So, uh, it's very important to us to have the, uh, road be operational before, uh, the, uh, units are occupied. And then, uh, in general, uh, you know, with the language that, um, the, uh, South Maui Community Plan has, uh, you know, we're looking in Kihei at 4,000 units being permitted, uh, in South Maui, uh, to be built. And, um, you know, uh, if you are traveling on the P'elani, uh, and you get to the Lopoa stoplight, uh, it is a three and a half minute wait for that stoplight to change. And if you're there during rush hour, sometimes you're caught in two of those, uh, stoplight cycles. So if we have 4,000 new units anywhere in South Maui that are going to feed onto just the P'elani, you can imagine 10% of those cars, 4,000, uh, 4,000 homes, that would be 400 cars backing up, 400 more cars backing up on the P'elani Highway, uh, which we believe is just untenable. So, uh, the specific language was put into the South Maui Community Plan to, um, require more roads and more infrastructure before, um, you know, building more houses. Thank you.
Mahalo for your testimony. Questions from the commission? Singnan, thank you again.
Thank you.
And next person is Adele, followed by Tom Crowley, and then we'll go into, uh, in person.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Great, great. Phew, thank you. Um, aloha, aloha. Um, aloha to all the members of the Maui Planning Commission. My name is Adele Rugg and I have lived on Maui full-time for over 44 years. My reason to testify today is to plead with all of you to please listen to what the Citizens Plan Advisory Committee spent over a year discussing. You as members of the Maui Planning Commission, and please know I appreciate you, but you don't even live in the Kihei area and yet you are controlling what is happening to our beautiful Kihei. Regarding the P'elani Promenade, we do not, and I repeat, do not need more light industrial. We need housing and that area is so hot. We need to put in trees in the area first. We must have additional escape routes out of Kihei. We must have more roads. The two roads are so clogged in South Maui at certain times of the day, one has to plan when they are going out to do errands. Also regarding the language for the community plan, please use only the word required. Do not, do not start changing the wording as it weakens the entire plan. Each one of you is required to listen to the community. Again, thank you for listening to me as you are required to do. Aloha.
Mahalo for your testimony. Questions for the testifier? Okay, Singnan, thank you again.
Thank you. Aloha.
Okay, next person, oh, Tom Crowley.
Thank you. Aloha, committed, Commissioner Tom Crowley. Uh, testifying on my own behalf and not in, for any developer or any landholder in South Maui. I am a resident of South Maui and, uh, I, I, I just want to bring forward something that I think is your, your most important kuliha here. And I heard it in one of the testimonies and that is consistency. One of the biggest problems with, uh, any development that happens is where the first thing that the developer has to do is find consistency between zoning and the community plan. So I would want to make sure that the, the commission in their review of any of these changes and so forth looks for consistency with either the current zoning or the zoning that the landholder is proposing to seek. If the landholder has a good reason for seeking the zoning that he wants, then your kuliha is give him the, the consistency with what, with what he needs. Now, whether he'll get that zoning or not, what, whether, you know, eventually it'll come back to you guys and it'll come back to the, the, the planning, uh, to the, uh, County Council to grant a change in zoning. Well, that, that's one thing. But what I would not want to see come out of this community plan is inconsistency between the current zoning that we have and/or the, the desires of a developer in, in going forward. And it sounds like some of the folks that are testifying are asking for you to do exactly that, to, to create an inconsistency, to make further development of that land impossible. Now, I'm not talking about any particular project, but I just want you thinking about that as you make your decisions about, about what to do. Um, the other thing, and I, I, I said this early on, is I do not believe that the community plan should be a whole nother layer of zoning and contain a whole nother set of requirements that aren't in the zoning code. So please resist the temptation to create unique rules for South Maui that, that change, uh, what can and can't be in current zoning. We really want to work with one set of rules that are consistent, uh, across the, uh, um, the, when, when someone comes in to, to do any type of construction or, or development. Um, good luck. I hate to take up any more of your time. Thank you for listening.
Mahalo for your testimony. Questions from the commission, Vice Chair?
Actually, not a question. Thanks, Tom, for the email.
Yeah, you're welcome. Bye-bye.
For our earlier meeting.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay, Singnan, next testifier?
There's no one else online, uh, so we'll go in person. So Sandra Kraus, followed by Cal Chip Chase.
Sorry, I move very slow these days. Okay, and I'll be testifying on two items, yeah? Both of them regarding North Kihei, if that's appropriate. Aloha abakea ozan ramor Kraus ko'ou inoa ikiya ma'ana va ke ho'i kene'e au'i ko'ou ma'o mana'o. As part of South Maui Community Plan process, 13 South Maui residents, 13 Maui, South Maui people who lived there worked for a year from October 2022 to November 2023 to produce a vision, a plan for our area that will benefit both residents and visitors for 20 years while preserving our natural environment and our cultural heritage. Over 80% of the Community Plan Advisory Committee CPAC decisions were unanimous with a lot of discussion. There was also extensive participation by the local community, people four, five, six generations who lived there, members which were incorporated into these final plans. I humbly ask the Maui Planning Commission to not now remove any of the protections in the plan to allow for greater freedom for the large developers, those especially not from Maui, to do what they want with our home land in South Maui. I would humbly ask also commissioners to please, number one, show us the citizens the water that would benefit the locals, not industry. Two, o'kai Malka, already unsafe, our children in our kabuna who already lived there, this is their home. Three, we do not need anymore mixed uses or industrial or commercial areas in Kihei. We need home. I'm sorry.
Sorry, no, I kicked her under the table. That was an accident.
They're playing footsie. You know, I saw that. I'm sorry. That's why, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. We do not need any more mixed uses or industrial or commercial. We need homes to call our own. Too many existing stores, shops, offices and shopping centers sit empty. I have sat before this Planning Commission, not you, but many years for the past 25, 30 years of my life. And as a native, I find it,
Thirty seconds.
I'll go on to my second item, compelling to say that, um, I have heard this issue about housing for this past 35 years and, and even before that, when Alma Cavalia was our mayor. And unless we start really sincerely looking for ways to develop these homes and make it available to local people only, it'll never, ever, okay? I'll move on to my next item. We need, guys.
Do you think you can summarize in a sentence or two?
Okay, this, this would be the summarizer of the first item. Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, we need houses, especially in Lahaina for our families who lost it all. We are South Maui and we ask that you all respect the decisions made by South Maui residents in the CPAC planning process, which was done by Kihei residences. Thank you. That goes for that one.
Oh, sorry, your, your three minutes is up.
Oh, I'm going to testify on my second item.
Um, I don't know that we can allow you to do that, sorry.
Oh.
I think everybody gets three minutes on everything.
On all the items?
Correct.
Oh, that's okay. Okay, I'll sum it up. The P'elani Promenade, that is a large project. We do not need it. There's too many empty shopping centers, too many empty, and that's right down the street and you know that. Right from where I live, it's practically empty. We don't need that. What we need is home. So I humbly ask, as you look at this, listen to the citizens, not the developers, not the people who are benefiting from these changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mahalo. Sorry.
Questions for the testifier? Okay, Singnan, thank you again.
Next testifier, Cal Chip Chase.
Hi, Cal Chip Chase. I, I actually hadn't intended to testify today because I, I did want to keep the commission focused on its issues, but the promenade came up so much, I have to say a few words, at least just about that. The first is to make clear that I, I don't represent Harry Lake. I think he's a good guy. I think his heart's in the right place, but he's not my client. My client owns a 13-acre portion of the same area within what was known as the promenade. My client, Hunuula Partners, proposed a 250-unit, 100% workforce housing development on that 13 acres. No commercial at all. Maui Tomorrow and some other individuals and organizations opposed that project, challenged it in the Land Use Commission. And that resulted in a stipulated agreement specifying that the workforce housing project could not proceed on that 13 acres and that nothing inconsistent with the LUC's designation of that 13 acres could proceed. And so if the designation of that 13 acres is residential, it's already been determined that that's inconsistent with the designation per Maui Tomorrow and a few others' request. And so it won't proceed. There will be no project, no housing on that 13 acres. It's not a simple matter of seeking a separate approval or going through further process. Nothing can be done on that because Maui Tomorrow and other parties would have to agree that something other than the light industrial use proposed, the Land Use Commission, could proceed on that 13 acres. And so the only way to get housing on that 13 acres or on Harry's portion of it is to designate it small town center. It's not merely an inconsistency. It's not a question of process. It's not a question of what was the intent or what CPAC want. It's simply nothing else can be done. And if any of the folks in the know who are part of that proceeding say otherwise, they're not being honest with you. That was Maui Tomorrow's argument before the Land Use Commission. 250 affordable units on 13 acres could not be built and it can't be built today, no matter what the designation comes out of this commission. The only way to put housing on that property is to make it small town center. And you can require in the policy or in the text that the maximum number of units allowed under the existing Land Use Commission designation shall be developed. That would be fine and will maximize the number of units that can be put on that property.
Thirty seconds.
The first step is to make it small town center. Thank you.
Questions for the testifier? Commissioner Dicos.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chip Chase. So what you're saying is once land is designated by the Land Use Commission, it could never be changed?
Not, not at all, Commissioner. What I'm saying is that there was an agreement among the parties to that order to show cause under which they agreed, Maui Tomorrow, citizens in South Maui for Responsible Growth and then an individual, as well as the project owners, agreed that the project would, would be developed in accordance with the Land Use Commission's designation. That's what Maui Tomorrow and the others wanted, develop it in accordance with that designation. Because they agreed to that, they would have to agree to a change to that. We could not simply go to the Land Use Commission and say, we would like to change it now. And so, given that agreement, given the position that they took before, that it had to be developed in accordance with the Land Use Commission's designation, which was light industrial. The small town center designation is consistent with that decision, consistent with that agreement, consistent with the position they took before the Land Use Commission. And the only way to get housing or anything else on that property.
Okay, so you could go to the commission. Uh, they can hear that the community, you know, these happen every 20 years. There's been a change of heart from light industrial. It seems residential is what the community wants. Maybe Maui, I'm sure Maui Tomorrow was blocking probably the mega mall. I don't know how that ties into your parcel, but that was probably, but if, maybe they'll testify. If they were fine with residential and the community wanted that, the Land Use Commission would have the authority to change it to residential. Is that, is that a legal process that could take place?
No.
No?
So, so the, no. The, um, and I'm happy, you know, the director, I think, had good points about, about the, um, use of a resource in a meeting like these. I, I totally agree with everything the director said. If there are questions from the commission that they'd like any of the project ownership to address with respect to those conditions or to the requirements, I'm happy to address them. Uh, but I was just reading Maui Tomorrow's brief as I was quickly preparing, realizing that I had to say something today. And they call out the 250 affordable units proposed for, uh, that 13 acres. And they specifically say that it's inconsistent with the designation and inconsistent with representations to the commission. So they specifically opposed developing 250 workforce housing units on that parcel, not merely the commercial components of it.
Sure, sure.
And but, I, to, to your question, Deco, Mr. Commissioner Decos, it's not merely that they would show up and say, okay, all the parties to that agreement would have to sign off that some other use would be allowed. And so this commission would be delegating effectively to private individuals the determination of what can go on that property. I don't think that's an appropriate role for the commission. I don't think that we can count on that agreement to be achieved. And I don't think that it would end in anything other than a taking of property because nothing could be developed.
Okay, I, I can probably ask for counsel, uh, the question. But thank you, Mr. Chip Chase. Thank you, Chair.
You're very welcome, Commissioner.
Any other questions from the commission? Any other questions from the commission? Vice Chair?
Sure. How long ago was this agreement made? Do you know?
Years ago.
Ago. So that's what we're left with now is etching the stone. And you can't put affordable housing on if it's residential.
Correct.
And that's, thanks, Mr. Perez.
Uh, thanks to all the parties to the agreement.
All right, thank you.
Um, I have a follow-up question. So you're saying that of all the land use designations that are identified by the this community plan draft, that small town center best aligns with light industrial?
I think I would phrase it this way, Chair. Small town center best aligns with the land use commission's order and still allows housing to be developed. You could have an industrial designation or something else that would facilitate compliance with the commission's order but would not result in the development of housing as part of the project. And so as I comb through the designations, it is the one that I can find that would allow us to do housing. And as I said, we would do, if the commission directed in its policies or any accompanying text that the housing be developed to the greatest extent allowed by the land use commission order, we would be glad for that limitation.
And that's because the small town center allows for mixed use?
Correct, Chair.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions from the commission? Okay, Singan, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chair. That's the end of the list that I have.
Okay, looks like we have Mr. Rory Frampton in the gallery.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for being here. I've testified previously on behalf of Haleakla Ranch and Koonaulu Ranch, and I don't want to repeat myself too much here. I'm commenting on two areas of change, although today I think I'm only going to speak to one because SubArea 3 will be at the next meeting. So this one is the Kihei Maoka, which we've heard a lot of discussions about. Kihei Maoka is a result of a cooperative planning effort by both ranches. It started off in the early phases of the Maui Island Plan. And the primary goal of the ranches is to address the needs of the community. And the most obvious need is for housing, especially for local families. And this area is perfectly suited for that. And it's, this area has consistently been recognized as an appropriate area for long-term residential growth. The one area that we have a concern with is the policy that you've heard about today, asking for completion of the entire collector road before one house can get built. And we have issues with that. We think it's excessive. It's a long stretch of road that goes, it extends on both sides of our project. It's not just through our property, but other multiple owners. I think it's premature to put that requirement on the project now without going through the detailed studies that we're going to be going through at the change in zoning and district boundary amendment process. There's other solutions that could be done that could alleviate the project, especially when it's going to be built out in phases and not in its entirety. So we have provided suggested language. And I want to say, we're not, the ranches are very much in support of this Maoka collector road. In fact, I testified in front of the State Department of Transportation and helped get the language in their plan, which recommended this collector road within the project areas because it would make it much more realistic to get developed if each developer is responsible for their own chunk. And so we're very much in support of that. We just, again, we think it's excessive and a little premature to put in such a strict requirement at this phase. And I'll leave it at that for now. I have my suggested wording in my testimony. And I have it here in case you guys want me to repeat it. And I'm open to any questions that you may have on this project.
Okay, mahalo for your testimony. Questions from the commission? Okay, I think I have a question. So you said part of the issue is that the development will be done in phases.
Absolutely.
So are you saying that perhaps the road would be done in phases?
Yes.
Okay. And you would be okay with, say, for instance, if it said, like, each phase will be done prior to occupancy of that phase?
Something like that. Our suggested language was require the implementation of transportation improvements prior to or concurrent with each phase of development, including a Maoka connection to Veterans Highway in order to mitigate impacts to the project as determined by the State Department of Transportation. So one of the options may be just that northerly connection to Veterans Highway that would give an access point for the northern portion of this project. The southern portion of the project may not be developed for many, many years. And so, you know, we definitely recognize the need to address regional traffic. Again, we just think it's excessive to put all of that onto the shoulders of one project when it's definitely a community need. And I would mention the, you know, we've worked well with the KCA and they recognize that that project should not be funded by just one entity and that the other multiple parties should be involved in developing that Maoka road, including the developers that, where the road runs through.
Got it. Any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Dicos.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your testimony. So can you explain how that is reinforced? So when you have something like that, language that says it should be done in tandem, who enforces that if that doesn't happen? Or what happens if those types of promises don't come to fruition?
Um, the way I see it playing out in this case would be through conditions of zoning. And, you know, if certain improvements need to be done prior to occupancy, then certainly that language can be included as part of the detailed conditions of zoning. And if you don't have those improvements done, if it's a very specific condition, then you won't be able to get building permits or sign off by the planning department. You have to comply with those conditions. It's a very different regulatory environment now than, say, when I started doing this, you know, over 30 years ago. And the development approvals that you have to get from the county council and from the land use commission are very, very specific. And they're very, they lock you into the requirements. And so I think that's how I see it being played out is through the subsequent entitlements that this body will have a definite say in, specifically the community plan change, I mean, the change in zoning.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Sure. Any other questions from the commission? Okay, Singan, mahalo for your testimony.
Thank you. And thank you guys again for your dedication.
Thank you.
Next testifier. Yeah, we have the last minute sign up, Albert Perez.
Online, Mr. Perez, please go ahead.
Any folks hear me?
Yes.
All right. I got WebEx to work. Hello, Commissioners, Albert Perez. And my ears were burning, I guess we were mentioned several times. So I'm here to answer questions, but I do want to reiterate some of what I said last time and add one more thing about North Kihei Maoka. So, um, two meetings ago, I testified about North Kihei Maoka. My main point was that the original population and infrastructure study did not consider all of the land that comprises North Kihei Maoka. And my friend Rory testified after me and said that since part of the 583 acres was considered in the study, well, that cast doubt on my main point, which is that most of the land was added after the study was completed and therefore not considered in the study. So the fact is that the current map of proposed land uses is not supported by the population and infrastructure study. And that is a violation of basic planning practice will result in an underestimate of the amount of infrastructure and money that will be needed to service North Kihei Maoka. Um, moving on to Pealani Promenade. Their attorney maintains that no residential can be built there because of the 2020 land use commission order. And that is false. Even small town center would require a modification of that order in order to allow residential. So we signed off on it because the developer was trying to get away with building a massive shopping center there. The land use commission had also rejected their environmental impact statement because of failure to disclose impacts. We were able to stop the plan back then with the help of the community by agreeing to the LUC order that they would go back to the original industrial plan. I want to make it clear, Maui Tomorrow will not stand in the way of residential on this land. But you don't need small town center to do that. There are other options, including residential, which the community wants. Employment Center allows some commercial and industrial with neighborhood-serving commercial, not the type of regional commercial that these developers want. We would be happy to cooperate in modifying the LUC order so the community can have what it wants there, affordable housing. We support the South Maui community in putting affordable housing there and not small town center, which is one of the most intense urban designations, allows the highest density and would pull business away from the town center in Kihei. So anyway, thank you, and I'm available for questions if you have any.
Thank you for your testimony. Questions from the commission? Commissioner Dicos.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Perez. So can you repeat, you said it seems like everyone, including the landowner, would love to see 80/20, 80 residential? You said you could designate it, you listed a couple other land uses that would address the residential, commercial mix, but not be as intense as a small town? Can you just relist those? I didn't catch them all.
Well, I'm just going from memory. So Employment Center is one. And Residential, of course, is another. But the other option you have is you don't have to designate the whole 88 acres as one designation. If you want to split it up, you can put residential in one part and commercial in a small part or whatever you want to do. So.
Okay.
Have options.
And you, okay, I'm learning the land use rules, but you stated that any type of residential in this particular area would still require a land use change. And does that, does that require all the entities involved in? Maybe you can just clarify.
All right, so to clarify, what we're talking about is the land use commission. There was a stipulation on the part of the parties that said that they would go back to the original promises that they got when they got the land use commission designation. And that was supposed to be for an industrial and commercial subdivision. And so residential is not mentioned in there. In order for residential to be there, all the parties, including Maui Tomorrow, would have to agree that that is okay. And we would be fine with that. Originally, we were hoping that it could be open space and retain all the cultural sites that are there. But, you know, we respect the will of the community. And there is, in the land use commission stipulation, there is more preservation area than there used to be. We would like to see those gulches preserved because that's where the cultural, excuse me, that's where the cultural artifacts tend to be concentrated. But yeah, everybody would have to agree to a change and we would cooperate in that for the benefit of the community.
Okay, and the last question, from my understanding, what does that process look like? Just if all these entities decide to go for a land use change, what does that process look like?
So that would occur at the land use commission. And there would have to be some kind of a petition, I believe, or a request for modification to the land use commission. And that would occur outside of the county's process, although the county would be a participant. I want to say that the community plan is an expression of the vision of the community. So if the community says, if the community plan ends up saying that we want residential there, that the land use commission would very likely take that into account.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Perez. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Um, I do want to clarify, I think I heard you say you would be more open to Employment Center designation than Small Town Center?
Well, I'm just naming that as an option, but when you look at Employment Center, I believe that it mentions some commercial and it says neighborhood serving. So you might want to check that. The Small Town Center has no such goal in the land use designation.
Um, so looking in the plan we have, the Employment Center appropriate uses is light industrial, business incubators, live workspaces, retail and commercial uses that serve the workers in the center and parks and civic spaces. Meanwhile, the Small Town Center appropriate uses include low to medium density commercial centers that service nearby neighborhoods, low to medium density housing, mixed commercial and residential and public quasi-public uses such as civic spaces, parks, schools and churches. So it sounds like based on what you're saying that the Small Town Center uses align more with what you're going for than Employment Center?
No, because the Small Town Center uses can serve neighboring communities and not just the employees within the Employment Center. Does that make sense?
I guess so. I'm not entirely reading that because the Small Town Center, it says it services nearby neighborhoods.
Mm-hmm, but not just the neighborhood. So, and that is ambiguous, right? What is a neighborhood? Is that defined? I think that's a problem with the designation.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, mahalo.
Next testifier is Judy Allen.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I actually am from way down by the ocean on Ulunea Road. And I really am very grateful for the MCAP to have spent over a year in putting together what was best for the Maui South community. We already are over, just gridlock on our traffic. I'm on Ulunea Road and of course, the Lahaina fires scared all of us. We have no idea how we will get out of Ulunea Road and out of Kihei in order to evade any kind of natural disaster. You know, to put more, more commercial, which the big mall that is contemplated would do nothing but cram up the Pealani Highway and everything else. I really, I really beg for the Maui Planning Commission to pay attention to the community who you have asked to do the work. They have given you their opinions. And after a year of very successful communications with each other and with our community, please pay attention and please follow what the MCAP has recommended. We do not want the mall. We told you that a couple of years ago. We don't want that. We need housing. And please pay attention to what the community wants. And thank you very much for listening to me. Mahalo.
Mahalo for your testimony. Questions from the commission? Okay, Singan, thank you again.
Okay, thank you, Chair. That's the end of my list.
Okay, our last call for public testimony. If you're online, please notify staff in the chat. Otherwise, going once, going twice. Three times, testimony is closed. Uh, temperature check, literally and figuratively, Commissioners. Shall we take a five-minute break? Okay, let us reconvene at 4:45.
Chair.
Commissioner Dicos, yes?
I was, I was just gonna say I need to transition from the boat to my I was, I was just gonna say I need to transition from the boat to my vehicle.
You need to go from the boat to your boat to your vehicle, he said?
In about, in about 15 minutes. But is that gonna be a problem, or can I just do that while the meeting's happening? Take a break?
Oh.
So, no, we won't because we lost Commissioner Hippolito.
Yes, he can't get back in.
Not sure what's
Oh, there's a cabling issue in his building. IT is working on it.
So if we lose Commissioner Dicos
We don't have quorum.
We don't have quorum.
Yes.
So.
Oh, so Commissioner Dicos, you aren't able to go now? You have to do it in 15 minutes?
Yeah, we're not docked yet, so, but I can stay on and transition. I just gotta watch. It's a tricky transition. I just gotta watch my step.
Oh, yes, not have you fall into the ocean.
Or put us in the ocean.
Or maybe we take another, just a five break when I
Yeah, when that happens, we can take a five-minute break. I think, yeah, but we'll come back at 4:45 because we just told everybody we'll do that. Nice place. Commissioner Dicos, are you at dock in five minutes?
No. Yeah, it'd be probably 30 minutes.
Oh, okay, all right.
At least, yeah.
Okay, perfect. That might be our next break time. We'll see. Welcome back, everybody, to our Maui Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, November 12, 2024, regarding the South Maui Community Plan. We have just closed public testimony, and now we can dive into our agenda items on Section 3, the growth framework. And in there, Section 3.3 and 3.4, looking at SubArea 1, Ma'alaya and Kealia, and SubArea 2 for North Kihei and the areas of change therein. So commissioners, we can go through, I guess, 3.3 first, unless we want to do like 3.3 SubArea 1 and then the Ma'alaya area of change. Because that's within there, you know, trying to keep the land areas together. Commissioner Dicos?
Thank you, Chair. Just a general question because there's a lot of talk of alignment, you know, making sure everything's consistent with the land use, but I'm wondering if Corp Counsel could clarify. I presume there are community plans that want to take their lands in a different direction, and therefore that new vision would would need to go to the Land Use Commission, and they would either accept or, you know, the zoning change. I just want to make sure I understand that. Is a normal process? Or is the Land Use Commission designation stand and no community plan can go against it?
Thank you, Chair. Well, this, this is kind of a complicated question. For a parcel that sort of hasn't gone through an approval process yet, I think the Land Use Commission has been pressing them to go to the county to get the community plan amendment first. In the past, that was not generally how things were done. Someone would go to the Land Use Commission first and then go to the county for both the community plan change and the change in zoning. That's in fact what, for Pealani Promenade, for example, that's exactly what happened. They got their, they got their state land use commission approval first, and then the community plan amendment was required to be something that they received. The community plan actually changed as part of an update process, and then the zoning changed after that. That's probably more typical of projects. It is possible, I suppose, for a project to have their community plan designation change first, and then have the state land use commission designation change along with the zoning after that. In my opinion, that's a little convoluted because you have to go to the, to the county for an approval with the council. Then you have to go to the state for an approval with the state, and then you have to come back to the county for an approval for the zoning. So in the past, the typical trajectory was someone would go to the Land Use Commission for their order, and that's, the county doesn't have the authority to zone anything that's inconsistent with the state. So that's generally the reason why someone would go to the state land use commission first, and then they could go to the county, eventually the county council, for both a community plan amendment and a change in zoning. Although now, because this, the Land Use Commission is supposed to consider the community plan as a factor in its decision-making, I think parties are being told you should go get your community plan amendment first, although that hasn't happened in the past. I would say, though, with this particular project, there's sort of a unique history if you're talking about Pealani Promenade because the, there was a challenge. There was an attempt to use the property for almost 100% commercial, and there was a contested case hearing before the Land Use Commission, where the county was a party along with intervenors, as well as the landowner, and the State Office of Planning. And in the context of those proceedings, there was essentially a determination made that residential uses weren't allowed in that area. The county argued in part that the proposal for 250 residential units was consistent with the decision and order because apartments are listed as a permitted use in the Land Use, in the zoning of the property, the light industrial zoning, the county zoning district. And in the 1995 proceeding, there was a mention in the transcript where the Land Use Commission, where individuals noted that apartments were allowed there. However, because there was never any, never any evaluation of the impacts of residential at that time that they could find on record, such as traffic studies and things like that, the traffic studies were more geared toward commercial and industrial uses. The Land Use Commission generally found that residential uses were not allowed in that area. And so there would need to have been a motion to amend the previous decision and order for any residential uses to be allowed there. And the stipulated decision and order, as I've read it, all it says what is that a particular site plan is consistent with the decision and order. The, that site plan is labeled, in the documents you have, it's not a full copy of the site plan. The actual site plan that's fully there says, I believe it says, Koona Ula Ranch, or it's, it's, it describes it as a light industrial subdivision. That's what it's called, a light industrial subdivision. And so they, or Light Industrial Park is what it's called. I'm sorry, I misspoke there. So right now, as far as I can tell from that stipulated decision and order, the only uses on the property at the state level are commercial and light industrial, and residential uses aren't allowed as far as I can see. I can stand corrected if someone points me to anywhere in the record of those proceedings where residential uses, either some or a large portion of the property are allowed. And the county zoning, M1 zoning, does say that apartments, I believe, are a use that's allowed in light industrial, but I could stand corrected on that too if we need to look that up. But anyway, at the time of the original decision order at the Land Use Commission, apartments were mentioned, but not really, the impacts of apartments were not really assessed. So that's how we got to where we are now. So because of the unique history of this project, I'm, I'm trying to consider here the ramifications of there's this decision and order that says you can only do commercial and light industrial after a contested case, and then designating that fully residential now, we would have to sort of examine how that would would affect things because there were entitlements granted, and now we're looking at a designation of something that the entitlements expressly said was not allowed. And so if there's a sort of comprehensive rethinking of this project that includes some type of Land Use Commission motion to amend and decision and order, you know, maybe that's something that's potentially possible, but right now, as far as my reading of that decision and order, the only uses there allowed are commercial and light industrial. And just in general, I do have some caution designating something in the community plan that is flatly inconsistent with the state designation, like for example, if you were state-designated ag, designating something community-planned, you know, residential or something inconsistent with that, without sort of a pending application at the commission or something like that, could be potentially problematic, though. I mean, not necessarily unheard of, but certainly in a case where we have a specific procedural history like this, could, could be potentially problematic.
Oh, you're on mute. Commissioner Dicos?
Sorry about that. Yeah, thank you for that. I wasn't necessarily gonna dive into the Promenade, but that was good. I think I absorbed most of that. And just for clarification, so I don't see light industrial in our path. I just see industrial, but it sounded like you said apartments are generally allowed, but if we're strictly speaking about the designation for Pealani Promenade, there is no, you can't find any allowance for housing?
Well, the problem was at the time, they talked about a commercial and light industrial subdivision. And at the time in 95, I think there was a discussion in the transcript where some of the members went over, here's the uses that are allowed in the M1 industrial, and someone said, oh, even apartments are allowed, and the response was yes. And then, and that was it. And they also had done, I think, a traffic study that assumed the uses were going to be commercial and light industrial and not residential. And I think, I think the commission's concern was you didn't assess the impacts of building this out as a residential subdivision. So the workforce housing units that were at the time tied to the Koona Ula project were not something the commission at the time was contemplating, and therefore not something the decision and order allowed. The county disagreed with that, but ultimately the commission, I think, found that it was not okay with, with those apartments being allowed as a use there. And so, you know, we ended up with the, with the sort of stipulated decision and order, going back to the classic commercial and light industrial subdivision idea that was originally discussed with the, with the commission. And that's, that's in the stipulated decision and order. There's sort of a updated site plan that has more of a cultural preserve, a frontage road. It's different than the site plan that was approved in, not that was approved, but the conceptual plan that was considered in the 95 decision and order. But I think the parties got together and said, okay, this is the example of a site plan that would conform versus the earlier approved version, which was like a four-lot plan that would be sort of these, you know, very large commercial structures. And so I think they said, you know, this is more consistent with the plan and left it at that. But I did not recall any sort of specific breakdown of, here's the percentage that has to be commercial or industrial, but I don't think there was any allowance for residential under the current plan, and I don't know if there's plans to file a motion to amend that, I mean, the signatories to that decision and order are Maui Tomorrow, South Maui Citizens for Responsible Growth, and Daniel Kanahele. I mean, that's in the order. So those would be the parties involved in, in that. There also may need to be, with the Land Use Commission, I don't know if there's any trigger for an EA or EIS for such a project. I'm not sure what type of, you know, other assessments and, you know, things like that would have to be done to go back to the Land Use Commission to, to ask for that. And I don't know if, you know, what the situation is with that, but as with any project, we would point out if there's an inconsistency with the state, you know, designation, we would want to have that, I think, at least, you know, addressed and discussed as part of any community plan designation that would make the community plan designation inconsistent with the, the state designation. Because generally, while the community plans, I think, are supposed to be, you know, conceptually what should be there down the line in the future, the county does not have the authority to zone properties, in my opinion, inconsistent with what the state land use designation is, or inconsistent with state land use commission conditions. That's potentially down the line, but I think looking for, you know, for planning in the future, that is something we have to consider in doing this designation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hopper. Thank you, Chair. Sorry, I didn't mean to jump to the next section.
Oh, you're good. You're good. This is a good time for any of these kinds of clarifying questions. So after testimony close, I should ask if anybody had questions for the department based on what we heard, anyway.
And sorry to be long-winded and address all those issues, but I'm trying to anticipate this coming up and trying to get that there because I had that background and didn't know if I'd have the chance to sort of share that in the future, because I think it was important. The last several meetings have gone over this, this topic.
No, thank you. It's, this is helpful, Mr. Hopper, because, you know, we've heard various angles on this subject, so it's nice to hear from you on this. Any other questions from the commissioners for the department or anything, department or Corp Counsel? Okay, seeing none for now. All right. So are we ready to dive into the plan? Yes. Okay, how about we start with SubArea 1? So the Planning Department, Long Range Division. If you see in the memo or update they gave to us, based on our input from previous meeting, to put the introductory information or the descriptive information about each subarea into a table format. Thank you for working on this. So we will start with this, I think. Let everybody get their papers out. Yes, real fast, question real fast. Are they all gonna be a different color for each subarea? Or is this just happened this way?
I would probably keep them different colors. That's how it's done throughout the plan.
Okay, no, yep, that's good. I appreciate color coding. Oh, I just got a note from Commissioner Hippolito. He's still having issues with getting back online. No, I think it's on his end. He said there was something to do with the cabling. Yeah. Yeah. And the movie theater, I heard, lost power. Oh, wow, today? Okay, for now, does everybody have this table before us? Okay, so commissioners, thoughts, comments, questions, revisions? Commissioner Wharton?
Thank you, Chair. One thing that I think we discussed was that we always wanted to have the Hawaiian be first in any of the descriptions and things that I didn't see noted in the notes.
I put the Hawaiian firsts in the table.
Right, I guess, do we want it noted that that's what we want to do?
Okay, you want it like recorded in this as our input?
Correct. Please, I think, I think it would be important that it's noted that that's a change that we wanted to put in.
Mm-hmm, no, keep that top of mind, sure. Okay, and then, Leonard Kumpf, what you're saying, like within the table, you have the Hawaiian designations and uses first. Yes. Any other comments from the commission? Commissioner Ticos.
Thank you, Chair. And I, I love the tables. They're, I'm really glad you guys put a lot of work into that. It's very useful. This might be more of a general question. So I know I, there was, so there's the projected population growth. And then, trying to find in my notes, there's the projected number of housing units anticipated over the next 20 years, which I think was 1,800 housing units. Correct me if I'm wrong. So when I look at this and I see 898 vacant housing. What, what is the vacant? There's not that many homes empty, right? What is the vacant housing, I guess, is my question.
This is from SMS data. So the vacant housing includes second homes and vacation rentals that are not in hotel zoning.
Okay. Okay. And then the, the future growth areas. Would it be valuable to put the number of units expected? We know the acres of the parcels, but I don't know if that's too premature because it's a moving target or some of these already. You know what I mean? Like, I'm trying to, if we're trying to plan for 1,800 homes and we know that Pe'ulani Promenade is going to provide so many homes, North Kihei Ma'aka is going to provide so many homes, it can help us align with the 20-year projection or the 20-year expectation.
We could do it based on the designations that are in the plan, but it does largely depend on what gets built.
Okay. So if it's not entitled, who knows what is actually going to end up there?
Even if it is entitled.
Even if it is entitled. Okay. Okay. Just a thought. Thank you, Chair.
No, thank you for the thought. I'm wondering if on his question about, you know, what is vacant housing included? Can there be like an asterisk or something that defines what that is?
Did you want that at the end where the definitions are?
I guess so.
I think, I think if I recall, we agreed that we would want all definitions at the back.
In the back. Yeah.
For assistance.
Yeah. And as I was, well, I should say, is there any other questions from the commission? And I'll ask my questions once everybody else does. No? Okay. So as I was going through this, you know, there was like flipping back and forth between the area of change section and then the sub area section and the area of change section and the sub area section. And I know like some of the areas of change, like span multiple sub areas, I think, or maybe I was getting mixed up between them. But just like thinking about the sub area boundaries and looking at the, you know, in table form, it's clear that some of them like bisect certain Ahupua'a. Like, is it possible to have the sub area boundaries align with Ahupua'a boundaries? And I'm thinking about this for various reasons, but if you could maybe shine more light on how, because I thought we, the question came up of how the sub areas were like divided. And some of them, I think I heard was like a little bit arbitrary because it was based on like what types of neighborhoods and communities were in each one. And there was some back and forth for some of them about where the line should be between different sub areas.
So, yeah. So these were developed in consultation with the Ala'akai, which is our leadership group that formed, because we needed a way, I apologize. We needed a way to, to organize the document. If you take a look at the West Maui Community Plan, it's very similar. The only thing that's different is that there are six here and there are four there. And the reason there are six here is because we had greater involvement from the community as to saying, this is a distinct and separate neighborhood. I would highly recommend not using Ahupua'a mostly because there are like 100 of them. There are many.
Oh, yeah. So I wasn't meaning like individual Ahupua'a. Like, just, you know, when you're coming at a border between them and you're like halfway through one or another. Because part of my thought as I was going through this is there's a lot of the policies in the plan are talking about like watershed management and drainage and wetlands and all of that, like was very much figured out within the Ahupua'a system. And so if we're like thinking about land uses and how to designate what and what we should protect and which gulches do this and which wetlands do that and where they are, it would be, in some ways, I think it would make a lot of like planning sense if we did that by Ahupua'a because that like naturally directs drainage in certain ways and it like naturally takes wetlands into account and therefore near shore waters and gulches and a lot of the concerns that are addressed by policies in the plan.
So if I may, I, I just want to zoom out a little bit more. The purpose of this plan, and the, the most important thing about this plan is that it's easy to implement. I mean, the most important thing is that it's right, but that the second most thing is important thing is that it's easy for the department to implement. And I think the more complicated we get with how, and creative, because I don't disagree with you, you're absolutely right about everything that you said. And I think it's really important that we organize it in a way so that when Project X comes to the, the department, we can look at the plan and say, okay, this is how this plan applies to this project. And the more, the, the more extra we get with how we organize the plan in between different types of planning areas. So you've got one planner who is working on a project, Project X in, in South Maui, but he, he or she also has Project Y in West Maui. And if the structure of those plans is fundamentally different, that makes it that much harder to make sure all of the vision and, and goals and values that are expressed in this plan are put into practice. So I just, I just want to, that's why I zoomed out a little bit because I very much, I know, I know there's, there's myriad ways that we could be organizing this plan, but I just strongly encourage you to kind of stick with the way that we presented it because it's very consistent with the, with the West Maui plan and it will make it easier for us to implement. Maybe I'm missing the ball that you were throwing, but I just.
Commissioner Ward.
I have a thought that may or may not work because of the amount of work. I, I think, Chair, where you were going is at least for us as commissioners, as we're making decisions, going through the plan, having that overlay would be helpful because we might make a different recommendation for designation of land use by looking at it from a Ma'aka to Makai approach versus an implementation perspective. So I don't know if that's where you were going, but that's where I kind of, what I heard was for us to be able to make educated decisions, not necessarily to have it in the plan for the planning department.
To some extent, yes, I think. And I wasn't thinking of like retooling the whole thing, but, yeah. And I, this was, I was thinking of putting this out for discussion, but like just seeing the way some of the divisions are between the areas of change. Like they're, for lack of better words, just lines on a map that sometimes go like right down the middle of a development. And so even, you know, if that can just shift one way or the other. Not enough that throws everything off and if that like throws everything off too much.
So the one development that I can think of that is divided is Kihei Ma'aka is both in north and south. I think that was actually done along the Gulch line. And so maybe that was, I'm sorry, it was not part of the discussions to where the line should be. If I may.
Yeah.
To what end? What are you trying to achieve by making a shift like this? I want to, I just want to understand so that we can help support.
Well, I guess my thought was like, you know, looking at where the sub area two and three boundary is, like, that's just a straight line drawn like north of the Tech Park or Lipoa, like down to where the high school is, and then it jogs where the high school is, and then below that it like follows the gulch. So like if that's a boundary between those followed like Kulani Hakoi Gulch instead of, you know, like here.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. I, I guess to what, to what end? What are you trying to achieve by changing that boundary?
Well, I was thinking, so like, you know, thinking about all the policies that are being talked about along with all of these things. And they're like, you know, like take gulches into account in drainage ways and things like that. And if, like, our approach to laying out land use designations takes into account these gulches, you know, puts those at the forefront, not necessarily at the forefront, but like has more of an eye towards heating them in land use designations for these developments that are going in around them. If that would, I don't know, make decision-making better. Because then it's decision-making more according to the land itself rather than lines that we're just putting because this is convenient to make this division here.
So if, to the gulches, I mean, we have, I know this isn't answering your question, but it builds up to the moment where I'm going to get into it. You know, we in both West and South Maui have very much taken gulches into account. You can see the difference between the existing maps and the current maps. Where we don't is just designating these boundaries and the sub area boundaries are not incredibly important except for to kind of put, oh, man, I wish I could just go on and on about this because I have like really strong feelings about this that go beyond the thing. But the, you know, we, because we don't have cities, because we don't have boundaries around our urban areas, it's a way to kind of identify this, these areas are very similar. And it's, that's kind of regardless, this is more of the built environment than it is the natural environment. These areas feel similar to the community and that's why they ended up the way they are. So I don't, you know, there is not, I, I'm thinking from a regulatory perspective, there's very little difference in saying, let's move the sub area boundary to match this gulch line. It's really not going to change anything, one way or the other. In fact, I want to say this, but I don't know that it's probably a good idea to say. I'm not sure that the sub areas are a necessity even, right? Except for that there are a way to describe the community. And I will tell you that people in North Kihei feel very different than people in South Kihei. They have strong feelings about their identity and they told us where to draw these lines. So that's the reason why they are where they are. As you get more Ma'aka of Pe'ulani Highway, it's, you know, that's undeveloped largely with the exception of Maui Meadows, so, and, and Lipoa, right? So of course, the commission can change those boundaries, but the, the regulatory function of that is very little.
Okay. And I guess that's part of where my thoughts were coming from because as I'm going through this plan, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, I'm like, what do these sub areas like mean and do for understanding the plan and for implementing the policies and the actions and everything, which I was trying to wrap my mind around. And I think I came to a kind of what you were saying is that they don't really mean anything other than they're a way to break down the description of what is in this area of the island. Yes, and it's great for having planning commission meetings because we can pick discreet areas. So, yeah. Okay. Commissioner Ward.
I, I would also add, though, I think that some of these sub areas have very different needs than other sub areas. So I think the collection of how they have been may not necessarily be perfect, but I could tell you that Ma'ala had very different needs and desires versus what McKenna has.
Oh, yeah.
Essential. So I think having the sub areas, maybe if they're not 100% accurate or following what, what you're going for, there, there is some logic around it. But I do like your idea from a planning perspective or from our decision-making perspective of looking at it from that much more holistic approach that we're making designations and recommendations that are in align with what we want to accomplish versus what has kind of been set as a sub area. So I know I just talked out of both sides of my mouth, but.
No, no, I appreciate that. Yes. I, like I said, I was bringing this up for discussion. Commissioner Ke'oloa.
I'll keep it short, but I just wanted to support you, Chair, in like when I looked at those designate, when I was looking at the sub areas, I was like, why would they, why would it like be separated right there? Because when you think about like, just from the ocean side of things, Kulani Hakoi, I mean, separating it at Kalapalepo Fish Pond when Kulani, Kulani Hakoi has like, that gulch has such a major influence on like the wetland in the coastal area down there, then looking at it as like a separate area is, from that perspective, like doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So I, I was having the same feeling as you, but I do see the doctor's explanation for like, it doesn't mean that they have different policies. The policies are still connected. So.
No, thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Okay. I guess where does this, where do we go from here and what does this all mean? Yeah. So I hear from the department that you don't want to change this. And, and I do hear that this is how the community figured these things should be divided. So give respect to that. I guess there's still, there's still questions I have, like what Commissioner Ke'oloa was saying about like Kulani Hakoi Gulch feeding into Kalapalepo and they're in like two different sub areas. Which, again, like I was looking at all these policies and they talk a lot about gulches and drainage and wetlands, which does not follow the land divisions that are written. But I understand that they're not for policy or things like that. They're just for describing what is in this area. Right? Okay. Further down on sub area one in government facilities, I was wondering if the US Coast Guard Station should be mentioned along with the harbor. Decker?
Yeah, I just, another thing to remind that I meant to say earlier is that these tables, whether you put them in tables or paragraphs, this section of the plan is not regulatory.
Yeah, I know. I know. It's descriptive.
You can add whatever you'd like to it and it's fine.
Okay.
We're fine.
Okay. Okay.
As long as it's true.
Yeah. No, no. Yep, that's good. And I know there's like a million things you could put in here and you just space in what's Yeah, no, no, yep, that's good. And I know there's like a million things you could put in here and you just space in what's highest level. Yeah. Oh, and Commissioner Dicos is on the move. Thank you for carrying us with you. Don't fall. It's like nice weather. Does look like nice weather. Okay. So at this point, any other comments? On sub area one description? If not, we can go to the sub area two description then? Anybody? Or if you have no comments, that's okay too. No? Okay. Um, I guess I would just note Pealani Promenade is indicated as residential in matching the maps that are currently in the map. Okay. Well, if there's no more comments here, we can go on to our areas of change. Or Commissioner Kialoha, did you have something? No. Okay. Okay, ready? Director?
Staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but this would be also a time, uh, you could do this in areas change, of change, but you could also talk in this at this point, if you wanted to make any designation changes at this time. Because not all of the areas of change will show up. Not all of the designations you may want to change would show up in the areas of change. So I just wanted to flag that for you before you move on.
Okay, thank you. Uh, commissioners, on that note, for sub area one map as a whole. Any changes? We did have a testifier comment on that like Ma'alaya triangle area being a transit oriented corridor versus small town center. Commissioner Ward?
So I can just give back history based on my recollection, which please correct me if I'm wrong. What is it originally was transit oriented corridor. It was modified because that space is a very small, narrow space. And we did not feel that putting housing in that area made a lot of sense. Just through the size of the space. So which is why we put it to the small town center. That's my recollection.
Mm-hmm. Okay. No, thank you for that. Commissioners, thoughts? Good how it is? Yeah, I see Nari from Commissioner Kialoha, thumbs up from Commissioner Dicos, thumbs up from Vice Chair. Okay. And I assume Commissioner Ward, having slept on it and ruminated and such, you're good with how it is?
I would stick with the way it is.
Okay. Oh, we just lost Commissioner Kialoha. Oh, there she is. Okay. Sorry, we gotta, we are bare quorum, so we have to make sure there's five of us visible.
I know. My internet is fluctuating a little bit, so I'm just giving you a heads up.
No, thank you. Okay, so how about sub area two overall map? So there's a few things in here. Well, I guess most of the changes, well, the areas of change within sub area two includes that North Kihei Maoka and Pealani Promenade. And the Central Maui Base Yard.
I did correct one thing.
Go ahead.
My base yard in the draft plan to you guys, we did not expand the area. It was expanded by CPAC to I think a hundred and ten acres, whereas the planning department recommended eighty, I believe.
Okay, so the, what we see on the map is.
That is correct. It's just the language in the plan.
Okay.
Says the the wrong dozen or the wrong amount.
Okay, so the picture in the plan that we have is the CPAC recommendation.
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay, so I guess taking one step back. So the Ma'alaya description in the three point four areas of change section. We had some change to the language that the department recorded in our memo before us. So just checking that we are good with that. Oh, one thing in the description in three point four has slightly different numbers than what is in the table.
A description or the table is updated with twenty twenty-two numbers.
Okay. So this will supersede the data that's in the paragraph. Okay. Oh, I had another mapping question. Oh, go ahead first, Commissioner Dicos. Oh, you're on mute.
Uh, the tables are replacing the text or we're gonna have both?
Um, the tables, I believe, replace the text in the sub area description paragraphs.
Okay, was that the intent to get rid of the text also?
Yeah, it's basically taking paragraph form and turning it into um, table form. It's all the same information.
Okay.
Director?
I, I think his question is, uh, in the area of change, we will have to update the numbers to match the table. That paragraph will remain under Ma'alaya on page eighty-six. Correct. Yes. Team? Yes, also, you know, since I have the mic. That, this is the, this is the problem with adding so much detail into this, this is, it's gonna constantly be wrong. Because this will go down to council and council will review it and the data may be updated again. So it's just something to keep in mind.
So I guess overall, whatever data is in the final plan will be whatever is most updated at the time.
Correct.
Okay. Um, oh, the areas of change maps, and this is a general comment for all of them. And tell me if this is crazy, also up for discussion. But so like the areas of change are there for a reason. My thought is it's like when they're put in isolation where it's just the change itself shown or the area of change itself, like we don't see how that interacts with everything around it. You know? So my question is if it's possible to still the other colored polygons for the other land use designations, but just put like a border around the area of change and just for the specific map. Yes, I have an alternative.
Okay, so I, I personally just to focus on it, I like the, the grayed out, but we could do just a mask. We could have all the other designations and mask it. So it just kind of fades out slightly.
Yeah.
Uh, rather than adding another line to the.
Yeah, whatever would make it so like you can still clearly see what the area of change is, but then again, like I said, to see how it interplays with everything around it would be informative. Cause like, where are we putting this small town center? In the middle of whatever. And I know the other maps are there, but then you're like flipping back and forth and all that kind of stuff.
Yep, Ken.
Okay. That's my overall comment.
I mean, I'm looking for our entire GIS group, but I'm, they're pretty talented. I'm pretty sure they'll figure this out.
That's like a couple of.
And if not, yes, they'll get us to a certain point and then Jamie will figure it out. Our design drummer.
Perfect. Um, okay, any comments on the Ma'alaya areas of change section? In three point four. Okay. I see no from Commissioner Ward. I see no from Commissioner Kialoha. I think nothing from Commissioner Dicos. Okay, all right. So next area of change. Let's see. Central Maui Base Yard, which I think is technically in sub area two.
Correct.
Yes. Okay. So sub area two map on the whole, anything to change. Not talking about the areas of change. Yet.
Chair?
Uh, Commissioner Dicos?
Thank you, Chair. Just a general comment. I, I like the summaries. You guys put a lot of work into the summaries. I think the table is a nice addition, but I'm not sure I'd take out the summary. I'll go with the majority.
Can I comment?
Yes.
When you're looking at a plan, especially if you have duplicate information, it's just more, it's not adding to the readability of it. I do think the table's actually added to make it easier to find information that you're looking for. And I think that was a good change, actually. The summaries did take work, but it doesn't mean they have to be left in, but it will also just make more work for somebody trying to review the plan and implement it.
Okay, fair enough.
Chair. Director?
I'll, I'll just add to that. I doubt that anyone reviewing the plan to implement it will actually look at these pages. So so I don't mean to disagree with staff here, but you can do whatever you want. I mean, if you, if, if, if the commission feels strongly that both the paragraph and the table are necessary to tell the whole story, that's fine. If you want to just have the table, that's fine. If you want to just have the paragraph, that's fine.
Okay, sorry. I thought the table, we're going in the sub area.
That's correct.
Replacing the sub area description paragraph, not the areas of change, right?
Correct.
So the first table would be on page seventy-four. And the second one would be on page seventy-six. Yeah. And then as far as we've gotten thus far, the areas of change description would be as is.
Except for where it needs to be updated and because.
Yes, as a data. Yes, yes, yes. Um, okay. Yeah, so I think addressing Commissioner Dicos's comment, I think we have the table not the paragraph for the sub area descriptions, because it includes all the same information. Just I think in a more readable and accessible format.
Yeah, and I, and I'm not stuck on it. It's just some people like to read the paragraphs. The table for sure, absolutely. Uh, I'm not gonna, so whatever the people, whatever the majority wants, I'm fine.
Yeah, again, I think it's exact, the exact same information. Okay. Everybody good? Okay. Commissioner Ward?
I, I'm good, but I'm just reflecting back on some of the sub areas that are further down. They are a little bit more descriptive of the area versus some of the data points. Cause there's less data to have in the table. Um, so it is a little bit more of a description of the past and things of that nature. So for me, I, I wouldn't want to lose the history part. Which I think putting that in kind of in verbiage in a paragraph is better because it gives context and it tells a story versus the data points in the charts, which I like, and I think they're great. But I think they're almost kind of two separate things. One is data driven and one is more history storytelling. Kind of. Is that?
Um, I guess, so what would you propose then?
Yeah, I guess a combo. It's, I like the data table. I think, I think me visually that like that works because I can go to the same place and reference the same data point. And so that's easier for me. But I don't want to lose the, the, the story part. So, but, but what, and just in reflecting as I'm talking, we might have to beef up some of the story part because taking out the data points would make it then maybe just two, three sentences. So we might have to look at beefing some of the story of or the, or the history or the, does that make any sense?
Would you, as a, thinking about a hybrid solution? Do you think that historical, you know, reference, whatever story there is could be put in that form within the table?
Yes.
Cause then you could look at the table and be like, there's like, oh, history, here it is.
Yep, I think that, that, that makes sense. I'm, I'm just trying to again, think with some of the other sub areas that, that I, I wouldn't want to lose that.
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree. It's good information. Are you talking about like McKenna has basically summarizing the one Ma'alalelo?
Correct.
Yeah. Which can be put into the table.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Dicos and Commissioner, followed by Commissioner Kialoha.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree. I don't want to spend too much time on this, but I, I agree. I think, you know, that it's just, it ties everything together. You look at the table, you can get data for sure. But you know, just general, this is the largest geographic sub area in South Maui. You know, that doesn't come out of the table. Uh, what's next to what, you know, that if, I'm not exactly sure that, you know, the work's already been done. It's in there. Why throw it out if it's just adding an extra paragraph? But if people are adamant about somehow it's duplicative and absolutely don't want it in there, I definitely won't fight them. But I do think it adds a little different angle and does stitch some stuff together that you can't do in a table.
Commissioner Kialoha?
Yeah, I, you know, the, in the sub area, and I guess this was covered last time in the meeting that I missed, but in the sub area two, North Kihei description, probably the biggest um, sentence in all of this planning. One of the, one of the most impactful sentences in this document to me that I've just continued to think about over and over again is the sentence that says Kulani Hakoi Gulch was named for the lake in the heavens that would overflow and fall to the earth as rain. And so I was like, oh my gosh, wow. So you know, like North Kihei probably used to flood. So, you know, like North Kihei probably used to flood way, way, way back in the day, but it was just that the wetlands could, could filter all of that sediment. And so it just brought me back to like how this area historically functioned and that this flooding, which we deal with so much now, in the planning commission and like the wetlands and everything is part of this place. And it, I don't know, to me, it grounds me back into like those historical functions of the place. So I, I felt like that was a really important part of the story that wasn't actually included in the table.
Director?
Just would love to suggest that since we are short on time, that you let the planning department take the conversation that you all have had and come up with an alternative form for these tables, that it kind of incorporates both things. No, don't want.
Um, I guess though, if I can, that, that sentence is in the table. It's the, it's the culturally significant feature. It's the first one, Kulani Hakoi Gulch, named for the lake in the heavens that would overflow and fall to the earth as rain.
Ah, I did not see that. Then I am, I'm corrected. That was the only really thing that I super felt like was missing in the table. So now that it's there, I don't have any strong opinions.
Okay, okay, no, thank you. Yeah, so I think if I understand from staff, you took everything in the paragraph and stuck it into the table, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And added extra things that you guys had mentioned in the last.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's great. Thank you for your work on this. You can tell it took a little bit of doing, yes. All right, I think we're okay, everybody? Yeah, everything can go on table, even if it's in paragraph story form. Yeah, okay. Director?
I'm not throwing a wrench in it, I promise. I'm just saying that you will see then tables for the following ones. So you can discuss at the point, at that point, if they're lacking something that the paragraph was missing.
Mm hmm. I guess my only.
Had.
Yes, my only thought of this would be, and I think we might be doing this already, but to pass by Department of O E V Resources, the culturally significant features for each of these areas. You know, if there's one that is not here, that should be your vice versa.
I wanted to make sure you guys like the layout of.
Yeah, no, the layout's awesome. It is great. Yes. All right, okay, moving along now then. So it's, I don't hear anybody raising anything of the subarea two map. So then we go to the subarea two areas of change, which the first one is central Maui Base Yard, which we've just been notified that the description is off, but the map is correct. And the description will be corrected to match the map. Okay. Um, any comments on this? Okay. Now, we did get testimony written in oral regarding an addition of more industrial area to, it's not in the areas of change, but it's in the overall subarea map to add on the Palakala side of Kulehunui. Which I understand from the department is outside the urban growth boundary. Can you tell us what we can or cannot do about this within the community plan?
So it would be improper to designate industrial outside of the urban growth boundary. The, the project or the idea proponent would need to get a Maui Island Plan Amendment first to expand the urban growth boundary. And then it would be appropriate to have a discussion about a higher intensity designation at that location. Okay, so staff, feel free to add if I missed anything.
And that is not something that we, the commission, can do through this community plan update process.
Correct, because the Maui Island Plan holds the urban growth boundaries. That's, that's where you would do that. You could recommend that, um, you know, the council consider opening the Maui Island Plan for this. Um, but yeah, as long as they live in a different document, it's not, not appropriate.
Because the community plan doesn't do anything with urban or rural growth boundaries.
Yeah, the community plan is meant to take a look at those designated urban growth boundaries that were designated in the Maui Island Plan and decide how these community plan um, designations fit within those boundaries. So this would be going on beyond that mandate.
Okay, and then the state land that's in this area. Well, I guess the county doesn't necessarily govern what the state does with their land or no. Well, like just DHL, so it doesn't matter what they're planning to do with their land, for instance.
That's specific to DHL.
Okay, and then there's like DL in our land, I'm pretty sure in the area.
And theirs is in the.
There's this within the urban growth boundary?
Part of it is within the urban growth boundaries. And they do, they do need to come through us for, for myriad things.
Okay. So if they want to do anything outside the urban growth boundary, they would have to also go through that Maui Island Plan Amendment process.
If it, if what they wanted to do was inconsistent with the agricultural designation that they have, correct?
Okay. Okay. Um, all right, so. It is warming up. I know, I can take off the shawl.
So I took my jacket off.
I know. I'm singing. Oh, uh, Commissioner Hippolito said they're changing out his CPU now.
How come you? You ready in that?
Thoughts and prayers.
Sorry, once again, I gotta let it know. Okay, all right, so that's central Maui Base Yard. Another area of change in here is, well, it says Moka North Kihei, but I believe it should be North Kihei Moka.
Those are used to separate the two.
Yes, because one is like the area and one is the project. Yes. Okay. So this includes Peelani Promenade. This includes, um, the ranch's big um, community. We've had lots of testimony on both of these. And we also have suggested revisions to the policies from the department. Which, so we can go through the overall description first. Discuss the land use designations and discuss the policies. Commissioner Ward?
Quick question, Chair.
Yes.
Uh, are we starting with one project, so to speak? That might be my recommendation to.
Yes.
Versus kind of bouncing around.
Yes.
Is there a preference on where we would want to start?
Well, I would put it to you folks, which one you feel like tackling first?
From my perspective, I would propose the ranches because it's at the top.
Okay.
And we're down.
Okay.
But I would also suggest that it's looking at land designation, not policies and designation.
Right, yeah. Because I think the policies will follow whatever land use designations we arrive at. Yeah.
That'd be my suggestion.
Okay, thank you. I guess, well, how about we start, given your background experience with discussing this, do you have any thoughts about Kihei Moka first? Discussion, you know?
So from a, from a history perspective, I guess.
Yes.
That's in my recollection. The ranches or the ranch proposal originally came, um, it was turned down by CPAC. Uh, it was too dense. Uh, so they did go back and come back with a different plan, which if I recall, failed. And then subsequently was voted in favor of. And, and I will say that when it did fail, I actually know that I, I spoke up because I was very confused. Because it, in my opinion, was meeting the majority of the goals that the CPAC was looking for, which is being near schools, jobs, transport, all that. And to me, it seems like if you're literally building next to the high school, it seems kind of a logical place to go. So it did eventually get to an approved status. So I, for me, I, I'm satisfied with how it is. And I believe that the community is as well. I know that the whole collective road thing is a challenge or whatever, but I think conceptually, um, I think my perspective is from talking to people that they're in support of the plans for that area.
Thank you for that. Commissioners, thoughts, questions, comments? Changes, keep the same, Commissioner Dicos?
Yeah, can you help me? So we're talking about land use designations. Can you, can we discuss what it is and what the Maui Island Plan? Sorry, the, the South Maui Community Plan? I'm just, I'm struggling a bit to follow.
Okay, so we're talking about the, um, Kihei Moka area of change, which is like Moka of the highway kind of going around, Ohukai, above the high school, above Peelani Promenade.
Yeah, the map on page 95.
Yes.
Do you like me to give?
Yeah, sure, and we'll have Planner Komkowicz.
Currently in the Kihei McKenna Community Plan, the area is designated agriculture with a small area of residential. Um, so this is, this expands to include the entire urban space or, or Maui Island Plan growth boundary for Kihei. And it was, it was as Commissioner Ward said, CPAC changed it to agriculture and open space and then changed it back to, and then changed it to Neighborhood Center, right, Residential Park and Open Space.
Open, yeah. And so we're just discussing whether we're fine with those designations.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have another mapping question about this. Thinking of the people who might not know what is Peelani Promenade. I know a lot of people do, but just thinking of somebody picking this up and saying, oh, Peelani Promenade and North Kihei Residential, and you have the map, but there's nothing other than people's knowledge to indicate exactly where they are. But correct me if I'm wrong.
No, I think that's correct. And in fact, the name Peelani Promenade is outdated. So, um, I'm not exactly sure that project proponent, I, I don't believe has finalized the name. And the, the name that keeps going around is Konuhulu, but it's not, it's not finalized too. I, are you suggesting that perhaps we identify on the map what these areas are?
Um, that, or find a way to describe them or relabel it or something? Because like the, the narrative centers around this project has this and this and this, and this project has this and this and this, and then you have the map. But there's nothing that ties the map together with the description other than all of like the background knowledge that we all have from sifting through all of these plans.
I think perhaps if we, if we outlined the areas on the map and showed the difference between the ranches and Peelani Promenade and even the DHL property that's, um, on the northern end, that might be helpful.
Yeah.
So just label it.
Yeah. Yeah.
With that.
Mm hmm.
Okay. Think we can do that.
Okay.
On which map are you talking about?
Oh, sorry, the.
Subarea map?
No, the, well, I was thinking particularly about the area of change map, where this, this is all described. Okay, so I think I'm hearing no qualms with how Kihei Moka is shown in the land use designation map. I see nodding from Commissioner Kialoha. Commissioner Dicos?
Okay, just to track, because we did get some recommended map changes. And I'm looking, I just see Peelani Promenade and I see, um, closure area. There's not a map that we're referring to that was a recommended change. We're looking at the original map that's in the existing South Maui Community Plan, correct? There's nothing, we talked about the ranch area, I don't think a a suggested change from the planning department.
Um, yeah, for the ranches, Kihei Moka, I don't think we really have any changes there. There's, there's policy suggestions for that, but nothing for the map. So we do have various mapping suggestions for Peelani Promenade or Konuhulu Light Industrial or whatever we should refer to it as.
Okay, but we're not discussing that now.
Oh, we can. So just because, so this is the area, this area of change is what we're looking at now. And it sounds like nobody has anything to change about the Kihei Moka project land use designations. But there's lots of talk about this. For lack of a current term, Peelani Promenade
Okay.
area, which we can call it, I don't know, sort of like a rectangle. And yeah, so in the department's memo to us from September 23rd, they have the current Kihei McKenna Community Plan Designation, the CPAC recommendation, and then the department's recommendation. And then we have lots and lots and lots of oral and written testimony.
Chair, could I ask a clarifying question to the planning department?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Ward.
Oh, thank you, Chair. For the department's recommendation, looking at the map, there's a little strip in the middle that looks gray-ish. I'm sorry, what is it?
That's a road parcel.
That's a road parcel. That's strange to go right, right over a gulch.
Okay.
Or bridges.
Got it, got it, got it. It just wasn't represented the same way in the other maps.
Hmm.
Understand that. Thank you.
Would you like to have a designation? I'll do some investigation.
Um, yes. And so within this parcel or well, these parcels, this project area, there's a lot going on. So there are various options for open space around the gulches and depressions in the land. There is the talk of the setback from Pealani Highway, and there is the discussion of land use designation, residential, small town center, or some combination thereof. And then there are policies to match. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Chair. My recommendation would be that we focus on the land use designation because the other two things are really more policies, which obviously may have influence of what land designation we go with, but I think kind of table stakes is what, what do we want in there? How big it is and how things are protected and setbacks. Not that it's arbitrary, but it's kind of the second factor, in my mind at least.
Um, by way of history, would you want to share any of that? Get the discussion going.
Sure. Again, best of my recollection, there was a lot of conversation around this. Originally, if I recall, the order is that it was originally wanted to be kept as ag or open space. It was then moved into, I believe, small town center. You have the cheat sheet. Karen can give you the cheat sheet. No, this one, this one was like a lot of back and forth, back and forth. I'll think Karen do the cheat sheet.
Someone did have a lot of back and forth. The first time it was designated, it was designated as residential with a 100-foot open space buffer around the Cultural Preserve, which was part of the LUC Order, the Cultural Preserve, and a 200-foot open space buffer along the gulches. The next time, just a second, let me. It was changed from residential to small town center. And then it was, there was an area-specific policy added to include a multimodal road, pedestrian bicycle friendly that runs through the Pealani property parallel to Pealani Highway. And then an 100-foot open space buffer around the Cultural Reserve was added back into the small town center. And let's see, the final change was at the last meeting, and it was a change from small town center to residential, but maintaining the buffers.
But, excuse me, within that, part of the discussions were also around having it ag or open space at some, in the very early stages.
I don't remember that.
Okay. Commissioners? We should have lots of discussion on this, I think would be right. Commissioner Dicos?
Are we on the Pealani Promenade?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I personally, for the whole South Maui Community Plan, I'm very hesitant to make any changes to what a year-long process with all the community, just because I feel different about something. So it'd be, you know, I would really have to see, wow, they really missed something. I don't think it's a good idea. But I tend to go with, and it sounded like a resounding residence. They wanted this as residency, as, as, sorry, zone residential. And there was talk about 80/20. I think residential does allow for some commercial that addresses the local, you know, the immediate neighborhood, which sound, which is exactly what I heard from the developer. Said if he was had it his way, we'd do 80/20. You know, we just don't want people to have to drive into another town to, you know, they could get local groceries and stuff locally there, which all can happen under residential. If I'm understanding that's correct, we, the department is recommending small town? Is that? Yeah. Recommendation including placing, uh, sorry, maybe, maybe someone can clarify. It can look great here on the map. I just need to know what these colors.
Yes, yellow is residential. That kind of pink color is small town center.
Okay. So, so yeah, I just, I have concerns, small town can have zero residential. It sounds like, based on Corp Counsel, there may not even be allowed residential. So if it's designated small town, it could, the developer who you know, did want a mega mall there, commercial certainly provides more value for your, more bang for your buck. So that's the concern I have. If you go small town, it's going to be 100% commercial and possibly, well, the zoning won't allow, the current zoning won't allow housing, so we can't develop that. So I understand you'd have to go for rezoning at the land use. Sounded like the party, well, but I think that's a typical, when the, the community goes in a different direction, you know, you go and ask the land use for a land use change. So I, I would tend to go with what the CPAC recommended personally.
Um, Ms. Kompkowicz?
Um, the small town center would allow the type of residential that is allowed in the light industrial zoning, which is residential on the bottom floor and, nope, that was backwards, on the top floor and the businesses on the bottom floor as it is in the traditional small town. First.
It would seem, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, for strictly residential uses, they would definitely have to go back to the LUC.
Okay, I think Corp Counsel said, based on this particular parcel, and Mr. Hopper could clarify, he didn't see any allowance in the agreements that would allow for out, is what I heard earlier.
Yeah, Chair, Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Hopper.
Yeah, so just a couple of things. Yeah, I, I, listen, I said I could stand corrected if someone can show me how this would allow for any residential under either designation, but I, I don't think the, the final plan accounts for residential uses. I will say, however, you, you have that site plan. It's a multi, it's multiple lots. So something like the mega mall, so-called, that was proposed, that could not be built because those were you know, extremely large lot, you know, buildings. These are supposed to be smaller lot, multiple lot buildings. That's a mix of commercial and light industrial. There wasn't a very strict breakdown, but the Land Use Commission did discuss that it had to be at least majority light industrial, and there were further discussions of an even smaller percentage. Ultimately, that's up, I think, to the planning department to, to decide if they come in for further approvals for, for subdivisions and things like that as far as the percentage breakdown. However, I, I just want to correct, they would not be able to build the mega mall project as it was proposed. That was sort of the whole point of the contested case in the eventual settlement. So they could build commercial and light industrial properties, but the, the layout would have to be similar to the proposed project that was attached to the, the stipulated decision and order, which shows multiple lots. So again, I, I just don't want anything I said to be misconstrued. I, I would agree that that I think putting residential on that, that property without going to the Land Use Commission could be problematic, unless someone shows me something in the record there that, that would, you know, correct me. But that's my recollection of that there. So just to correct sort of a couple of things there in the discussion.
Commissioner Dicos?
So are you saying they couldn't do 100% commercial because they submitted plans that had 50% residential?
Uh, I don't know what plans you're talking about that were 50% residential. I'm saying that they, they talked about
There were two, two parcels within that were lagged residential, I thought. So they couldn't deviate too far from their proposed. I thought that's what you meant.
The, the contested case was about making the developer comply with the 1995 decision and order that said you, it was a commercial and light industrial subdivision. And there was not a proposal at that time for residential development. So there was not an analysis done of the impacts of residential development before the Land Use Commission. So that there was a, and, and, you know, to me, the stipulated decision order could potentially have been clear on some of these things, but right now, it basically says they have to do a commercial and light industrial subdivision. I, I have no basis to say that residential is allowed in either case. You know, would be willing to review the record on that, but at this point, I don't see anything in that stipulated decision and order that allows any residential. There is a, there is allowance for commercial and light industrial. And again, the department can go over this, but my recollection of the proceedings was that a 100% commercial development would, was not considered consistent with the Land Use Commission's 1995 decision and order. Because they had to do a commercial and light industrial subdivision, and the, the sort of the traffic impacts analysis assumed predominantly light industrial uses. But there was never a specific percentage breakdown. We sort of, I think would have liked to have seen that from the planning department's perspective, so they'd know what to, what to do as far as subdivision approval and if the project went forward. But there, there was, I think there's enough in the record to say that a 100% commercial development would not be consistent with that decision and order based on the Land Use Commission's contested, the Order to Show Cause hearing that it had on the, on the proposed project, which was a 100% commercial project. Well, almost 100% commercial. There were some discussions of, of, you know, big box store and whether those were considered a light industrial, but there was a, you know, that was a predominantly commercial project that the commission said was not consistent because of both the, both the layout being so inconsistent with the conceptual site plan from back then, and the use breakdown being inconsistent with what was, what was considered initially. I, I would potentially say another party to this could be the State Office of Planning. They're very instrumental and had pretty strong opinions on that order back when it came up. So any sort of future planning for here would have to involve them if it involved going to the commission and interpreting the order. So I also want to note that.
Okay, well, thank, thank you for that. I guess what I would say is that we're, we're planning for, from residential, we're planning for 1,700 anticipated new homes, seven, 1,700 in the next 20 years. That was in the, I'm not sure why it's not in this plan, but it was stated in the I think in the South Maui Plan Forecast Paper, it was stated in the Maui Planning Department Forecast. So 1,700 homes is the target. When I look at McKenna Resort, 1260 Honolulu, 1150 Lead Corps, 975 Lepoa, 1250, I mean, we're, we're planning for over 7,000 units. Now, that doesn't mean we shouldn't plan for residential. And what I heard from, from the testifiers is if we're gonna designate this, you know, we want it residential, preferably 80/20. So it'd be nice to, if anything, in my opinion, to align with that desire. And, and small town is not going to, you know, it, it sounds like it'll still get kicked to the land use. We had heard different people say, no, 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 you can do apartments, or there's a, there's a, but we heard from Mr. Hopper that very likely might, if you want to put any residential here, you wanna, you're probably gonna have to do a land use change. So seems to me to meet the criteria of 80% residential, we wouldn't want to risk a small town designation, which could allow the developer to do majority commercial. Anyway, that's just my opinion. Thank you, Chair.
Chair.
Thank you.
Can I chime in there? So if we do it residential, we get no residence, zero. There's a stipulation in there. Maybe you weren't paying attention, listen to that part. There's a stipulation from a lawsuit, Maui Tomorrow and others. If they came to the table and said, we'll remove all those stipulations and make that residential. They went to Land Use Committee, came back with a free and clean title for us. I'd say we go residential. If not, it has to be small town center. Or it's a zero.
With all due respect, Commissioner Thompson, I don't think you heard Mr. Hopper said there's no, there's potentially no residential, even small town may not allow residential under the existing land use. So either way, but if it's small town, you potentially could continue forward under light industrial, you just can't do any residential, which may be right up the landowners' priorities.
Yeah, you should read the small town center designations before you said that.
Okay. And point of clarification, I heard from Mr. Hopper that based on the current land use designations and the decision and order from the State Land Use Commission, that this cannot be a solely residential project. There has to be a commercial and light industrial component. Mr. Hopper, is that correct?
I, I'd say that's correct. And to me, it's questionable how residential is allowed in this because there was a discussion of 250 apartment units that was something that was considered inconsistent with the decision and order. So it sort of news to me that there could be potentially residential in this area. I don't know if that involves a stipulation of the parties or something like that, but because the, because the original impact analysis didn't really include residential, I think that was the problem. And just as a general reminder, it's a good idea to have members address the chairperson on the arguments they made rather than, than each other. Because I know people can feel strongly about things, but let's, let's go with addressing the chairperson in, in making these, these arguments about, about these issues. It's, it's a good tip, and it's also consistent with Robert's rules of order.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Hopper. I have a follow-up question to staff. So there are, there's been a lot of testimony, conversation, policies, I believe, that talk about an 80/20 ratio of residential to commercial. Which of these community plan land use designations would enable that?
That would be something that needs to be in a, a policy. That's not, small town center could enable that. Residential could enable that, but it's not guaranteed one way or the other.
Director?
Yeah, just to add to that, I think between the two designations, residential and small town center, small town center is more likely to enable that simply because of the nature of that designation. For residential, you know, we added commercial to that, but only in the minorist of senses. As in, so to, to reflect the mom and pop corner store potentiality, not 20% of, of the designation. So I would say to achieve that mix, you're more likely, but staff is absolutely correct that you would, if you wanted to specify a mix of 80/20, you would have to do that through policy.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I guess making sure I'm reading. making sure I'm reading what you're saying as it is reflected within the plan itself. So this says in residential that small, small scale commercial uses that serve the immediately, immediate neighborhood may be permitted on a limited basis. So it's like not guaranteed that there would be commercial allowed within residential as it is put forth by the community plan.
That's correct. I mean, I think this is the other thing. We gotta think about the, the level that we're at as well, right? We still have zoning to contend with, right? So the zoning would have to also allow that designation to occur, that used to occur.
Okay, and then remind me, the current zoning of this P. Lani promenade parcels?
M one light industrial.
Okay.
Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I guess the, my question is to corp counsel that the planning department's recommendation was for two of the four parcels as small town center and two parcels as residential. Would it be, in your opinion, the appropriate guidance to, that it should be the same designation or having that split? Is, is that something that we could consider, or is that something we should stay away from?
Uh, I mean, that, as a split designation, I'm not sure what we're getting at there. I mean, we're, we're replanning a project that had a or it seems like you're looking at attempting to replan, replan a project that went through the land use commission with a very very specific set of, or not, not a, a contested case hearing that resulted in a decision and order that says you can do commercial and light industrial and has this, this site plan. So you're, you're looking at sort of re-designating that and, and I mean, I want to know what the long-term plan is for this before doing that. Or is the plan to go to the land use commission immediately after that and, and ask for that? Is, is, is this going to happen? Because you know, you've got uh, the, the particular history of getting a specific entitlement to move forward with a project. And now it's, I, I suppose as was the case since nineteen ninety five, it's not moving forward. So um, you know, I, I don't know how you can recommend a residential, these residential designations, if that's not a use that's allowed on the property at the state level. If you're planning for the future, then you know, that's something to consider, but um, I guess I'd let to the department speak to their thoughts on that designation. But um, I'm just generally sort of at a loss to explain designations for residential uses. That was something that was sort of very specifically um, stated that was not allowed by the original decision and order. That's sort of what I'm struggling with.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Dicos.
Uh, and I, I'm not sure I can address Commissioner Ward, but um, maybe Commissioner Ward could address, you know, back when this, this South Maui Community Plan was being developed, I'm sure this must have come up. Where they wanted to designate it residential, I guess the county can address that. I'm sure this discussion happened and I'm assuming they, they recognized that this would have to go back to the land use commission, but that is the desire and intent and vision of the South Maui Community, and that's why they designated that. The, the, the discussion of a land use change not come up during the CPAC?
If I.
Commissioner Ward.
Again, best to my recollection, the conversations did come up, but I don't believe that, that uh, the committee understood enough of the whole process and of what actually had to happen.
Oh, sorry, we can't get into conversation this way.
But we didn't get into the depths of what had, what process had to go through. Um, there was questioned about how what would happen and we have the right to make different designations, but we didn't get into any kind of legal discussion on what that process would look like.
Commissioner Dicos.
I guess my other question is, is are we doing the same thing by re-designating the land use as a small town center? I know some are saying, well, there's portions of that that might fall under light industrial, so maybe we can get away with it. I mean, we're essentially doing the same thing. We're changing the land use. That, where it sounds like some people are saying, oh, residential, don't even try to go there, even it, but maybe small town, we might be able to sneak it through. Can you address how the small town is not a land use change?
If I may, so the, the current zoning, well, I should even the current community plan designation is light industrial. The current zoning is also light industrial. The draft community plan from CPAC changes it to residential. The department is suggesting a split between residential and small town center.
Oh, I guess I didn't, okay. Can you clarify, I guess that's what was came up before. Can you clarify the split? Is it you draw, okay, I see. So the
So there's like four parcels. Two are adjacent to P. Lani Highway and two are Maoka. The ones on the Makai side, the department is suggesting as small town center and the two Maoka as residential.
Okay, so I guess same question. So light industrial has to be changed twice, right? So half, half of the parcel will have to be changed residential, half to small town center. So isn't that also a land use permission pathway?
So I think what they're, what, what um, what we've heard from um, like Mr., Lake, Mr. Chip Chase, and I, to some extent, Mr. Hopper, is that light industrial zoning allows for apartment and mixed commercial uses. Which, if you look at the community plan, land use designation description for small town center allows for that same mix of uses. So in a sense, that would be most aligned with what the light industrial zoning allows, calls for.
For a half of the recommended change.
Yes.
By the county.
Yes.
And the other half. So the, so half will be small town with some light industrial uses, potentially no residential. The other half will have nothing because we're not allowed residential, according to some viewpoints.
Yeah, and I think we heard from Mr. Lake that um, I think there would need to be maybe some kind of read from the State Land Use Commission as to whether like even this mix would satisfy the light industrial requirement. But I think if I'm hearing the department correctly, we can put in policies regarding this area that would call for, I think, whatever land use designation we arrive at, kind of like putting conditions on an approval for a project. We could say that anything within this area would have to achieve an eighty, twenty mix of residential to commercial. So I think in that sense, well, you know, it's kind of good planning, I think, to have a mix of land uses. Especially in this kind of area where you're like right next to Oahu Kai and right next to the school and right next to all kinds of stuff. I think you would want a mix of uses in this particular location.
Right, which I think everyone agreed. Um, I'm a little confused. So we, there is, we haven't gotten a policy. There is policy language that calls out an eighty, twenty split.
Yes.
But the recommended map by the department is not an eighty, twenty split. It's a you know, looks for fifty, fifty about.
Yeah, that, I think that's, that's like the designation on the map, but with, within those parcels, the actual what gets put in there would have to be an eighty, twenty split between residential and other commercial, light industrial uses. But this, like this, again, the small town center includes low and medium density housing, which is, I think, what everybody is talking about.
So Chair, would they be able to have like a florist down below and a house up above or a unit?
I think so.
And is that what everybody kind of wanted?
I think so, yes.
So.
Yes.
Yeah, and if we try to do a residential, we can't, there's a stipulation, right? There's a lawsuit involved. So we can't do that. But we'll have nothing but small town center. And we can make policy, it says eighty, so we can make eighty percent housing? Wouldn't that be the best for everybody? Would seem like it.
I, I'm sorry, Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Dicos.
So, it was a bit of a push-pull, right? You know, some folks want the commercialization, that's where the, that's where the money is. Some folks want the residential, that's where the need is. So we're trying to balance um, that this residential, I think you already stated that, does allow for small scale commercial use that serve the immediate neighborhood, right? I think that's what we're talking about. So you're not pulling, because we already have empty commercial everywhere. It's already pulling too much business from already small town or whatever they're designated as, but other plazas are all, you know, they're all empty. You don't want to necessarily pull from other communities into this community. Um, but you want to serve the local community. I, I agree with the commissioner's comment. It'd be nice to have the split level. Where you'd have the housing above the businesses and that probably wouldn't well, I don't know if you can do that or not in more residential, but it, but it seems like residential serves the immediate neighborhood. When you get into small town center, that's where you know, those landowners that would like to get as much commercial as possible, that was the intent of the mega mall. Um, I gotta pull up small town center. You know, that service the nearby neighborhoods. So you're, you're getting away from just serving that local neighborhood. You're now getting bigger and potentially pulling business away from side neighborhoods. So I, I don't agree that the small town center meets the, the intent of the eighty, twenty. And as far as, as far as the litigation, I think we heard, you know, I, I think we heard they were perfectly happy to support uh, residential. So I don't think that's a hurdle that we need to be concerned about.
Um, I guess, so one thing, we heard from the director just a little while ago that this residential land use designation as envisioned within this community plan. It says small scale neighborhood may be permitted on a limited basis. So it's like one-offs here and there. And by no means, I think, would get to anywhere near twenty percent of the whole entire project. And I think the concern is that that would jeopardize the compliance with the land use commission decision and order. So I think what like vice chair is getting at is that the small town center, I think it's getting maybe construed as it would be just full-on commercial development. But again, if we go back to the way it is described within the plan, it's low to medium density house, mixed commercial residential. Low to medium density commercial that service the nearby neighborhoods and then civic spaces, parks, schools and churches.
And small town center have no residential, have no housing.
Can it have no housing?
Yeah.
Well, not in the way it's described. And again, I, we did, like, what we heard in testimony from Mr. Lake is that they want to deliver as much housing as possible within the confines of their approval from um, the state land use commission. Like he said himself, I'm pretty sure today that housing is where the demand is and they want to supply that as much as possible. But they're trying to stay within what they've been approved for by the state land use commission. So I think putting it all together, the compromise, and I think the way to make everybody happy is through the small town center, because that enables low and medium density housing and mixed commercial residential. So where you have like a business on the bottom and residential above it, which we have in Kihei already, right down on the Poa. Um, and that's kind of how our small town neighborhoods used to be all over the place. And then we put in policies that enforce this eighty, twenty ratio.
Yeah, I think, though my understanding of small town center, you can have these appropriate uses, they list four.
Yes.
But low to medium density commercial centers could be the entire spot as well.
Well, they have to service the nearby neighborhoods. So I think you would need to have nearby neighborhoods.
Well, there are nearby neighborhoods. So
Wow.
You wouldn't have to build them, they're already there. So, but you're saying through policy, you could protect from that, that from happening, right?
Correct.
You're saying, and I, I guess my next question would be, how legally binding? You know, again, this is not to, this is the developer, as you stated, wants to do eighty percent. Whether that's true or not, we hear a lot of what they're planning to do and what they'd end up doing is very different. If you're saying we can establish policy to hold them to eighty percent and that is binding by law, hey, I'm all, I'm all for it. I, I think that protects what the community has been asking for, eighty percent residential. Um, so yeah, I if, if there's a way to protect it, um, I'm all for that.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Yes, I believe we can make policies to enforce that, for sure. Okay, so does that mean we are at this split, kind of what the department's recommendation is for small town center along Pete Lani Highway and then residential Maoka?
Is that all in problem?
That's on promenade, yes. I'm looking at the department's memo from September twenty third.
So is Maoka gonna be the same, the same stipulation from the?
Oh, sorry, I meant the two Maoka parcels within the floor.
Gotcha, okay.
Yes.
Perfect. That makes sense.
Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Chair. So from my perspective, I, I like the split that the department is recommending. But listening to corp counsel, it doesn't seem like that would be an appropriate step. So my recommendation would be is that we would go with small town center for all of it. Because that fits into what corp counsel is telling us would make sense. But I, I struggle because I feel it's not representing some of the community's sayings. I'm struggling in my, in my head on how do we balance that out so that we're supporting with So I'm struggling in my, in my head on how do we balance that out so that we're supporting what the community is saying that they want, but from a designation perspective, we're not delaying things and making things more complicated.
Mm-hmm.
I, I'm battling that with my head, but, um.
Sure, can we put in policies to that end? Director?
Yeah, I, I think the language in the policy, I gotta get back to it, hold on. Um, the language in the policy is, uh, I was right. Uh, as it's written right now, the three parcels shall be, uh, mixed use pursuant to the STC definition and shall not. It's three point five point eight on page ninety-three. Um, yeah, so, uh, the eighty twenty split would be, I'm not sure where the three parcels come from. Do you remember why it's three?
Because those are Peleani Promenade. The other parcel is actually one of.
So that eighty twenty split would apply if you chose small town center, uh, across the board?
Hmm. Is that what you were asking?
What I, no, what I was saying is I'm struggling that I like the recommendation of having some of it designated residential, but listening to corp counsel, the guidance, at least what I'm hearing is saying, no, don't do residential due to the agreement, which would then lead me to say that it should all be small town centers.
Fine.
Um, with a policy to potentially put some further clarification on defining how much housing.
Okay, so can we, or do we need to then modify three point five point eight? Sorry, if you intend to go one hundred percent STC, it, no, right?
No, we just took it out because it was designated residential.
Right, okay. So as it is written, does that like have full enforcement? When you go to implement this, as much as possible?
As much as possible, yes.
As much as possible?
Yeah, yeah. And like I said, so just, yeah, thank you. We proposed removing it because of course it changed. And so, uh, we would not recommend removing it if you chose to go back to STC.
Okay. Okay, so in designating all four of these parcels as small town center, we keep in three point five point eight, but say the four parcels instead of the three? And I guess you're changing everything from shall to must across the board? I think so. Yes, everybody? Thumbs up, Commissioner Dicos?
I'm very confused here. So, um, what, what are we designating all, um, small town center?
Yes, so what Commissioner, um, Ward was saying is that to achieve or to be like in compliance based on what Mr. Hopper told us about and explained at length in complying with the state land use commission decision and order and this being a light industrial subdivision and then light industrial calling for a mix of like apartment, which is residential and, um, other types of light industrial and commercial uses. And then putting this all as small town center, which allows for housing and mixed use and commercial, then they're all in alignment. And then to enforce this eighty twenty residential commercial ratio that everybody I think is all in agreement with, we keep in this policy three point five point eight. But have it refer to the four parcels that are within this area.
And the area you're referring to is Peleani Prominent?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, so what we keep leaving out is what corp counsel also said is that based on the existing, uh, yes, small town center may aligns more, probably on the light industrial side of it, but there are, there's no, there seems to be language that doesn't allow residential. So here's the risk, right? Here's the risk we designed, sorry, go ahead.
So what he was saying is that the co-, the land use commission decision and order about this being a light industrial subdivision does not allow for a hundred percent residential.
Oh, Chair.
Yes.
Chair, I want to be a little clearer. I, I don't think it necessarily allows for any residential, because that was not part of the original plan in nineteen ninety-five. Um, again, there was like one parcel with two hundred and fifty units that was the proposal. They proposed like two hundred and fifty apartment units out of the entire area, which would have been a, you know, substantial minority of the area. And the commission still said, no, you cannot do that because residential was not something that was contemplated by the original plans. So they were pretty restrictive on residential. So like I said, if there's something else that I'm missing from the settlement discussions and revised decision and order or the stipulated decision and order, I, 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 um, I admit that that was a lengthy proceeding and may have overlooked something. I don't have all the transcripts of our discussion. But, um, the original proposal was for two hundred and fifty apartment units along with this major commercial project. And even though the, 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 um, residential was a minority portion of the plan, it was still rejected by the commission. And I would note that there are, in light industrial, you can't have a hundred percent apartments if there's no other conditions. Like I think there's some pretty substantial apartment projects in Maui that have been built out already that are in light industrial zoned areas. Um, but the land use commission at the time said, when you came in for your original proposal for a commercial and light industrial subdivision, you did not have, uh, an analysis done of the impacts of a residential project. Therefore residential isn't allowed, even if it was a pretty substantial minority of, of the project. That, that's what was proposed along with the large commercial project and that was, that was rejected, um, along with the large, large, uh, commercial project, sorry. So, you know, to, to clarify.
Yeah, Director.
Yeah, I, so I don't deny that the land use commission's decision and order is important. However, um, Mr. Hopper said something earlier about planning for the future. And that is literally what this plan is supposed to do, is to plan, is to plan for the future. We're not, we're not beholden to that, to that order. What we're saying, regardless of what you choose to do here, and I, I highly recommend, you know, based on the, the department's recommendation, you're going down this path of small town center. As a planner, it makes a ton of sense, especially associated with this policy three point five point eight, because that will preserve the mix that the community is asking for, that eighty twenty percent mix. We cannot dictate and control whether or not the project proponent then decides, I've got this community plan designation, I'm going to go back to land use commission and, you know, do the next thing. We gotta think about our lane here and our lane here is this community plan. And it's up to the commission to decide what the best expression of the community's vision is in this moment. It sounds to me like you're close to that and I just, I wanted to encourage you, as it is seven oh one and we are about to lose quorum, to please finish this, because I think you can, I think you're very close.
Agree. So.
Chair?
Yes, so I think we are on the verge of saying that these four parcels would be designated small town center. And we have this policy three point five point eight that calls for this eighty twenty residential commercial mix within this whole thing. And even if it's phase, each phase would follow that eighty twenty rule.
It's great sense.
Commissioner Dicos?
Yeah, I'm hearing very different stuff. So, um, what I heard from the chair, this is a visionary document that, you know, I, I mean, I guess, first of all, I don't, what is involved with getting a land use? I mean, is this a ten-year process? That clearly the, the community has spoken, they don't want this to be light industrial. They want it to be residential, but they would like the eighty twenty, because that was also in there. So that's what the community wants. That clearly suggests, well, the best thing would be a land use change. But we seem to think that a land use change, we cannot do that. I don't know what that's, what's involved, but it seems like it's just too heavy a lift. But I just heard the director say, don't be so restricted by the land use designation. This is a planning document. We, things change, they only happen every twenty years. So don't be so caught up in the land use if it require, if that's what the community wants. Are we just, is the land use change just an impossibility? That's never, we just don't want to go down that road?
Um, okay, so I, stepping back a couple bits. So the goal is eighty twenty residential commercial split in this area. Maximize the amount of housing that goes in, but still have this mixed use action that allows for the grocery stores, the corner shops, the services, the schools, the neighborhood parks, everything you would want in a well-planned community. Do we agree that that is the overall goal? Yes? Okay, so based on, okay, thumbs up. So based on the designations that are laid out in the community plan, the one that most enables that mix to be achieved is the small town center. And there's been people who have said, oh, but that's going to enable them to make it a hundred percent commercial thing, which we don't want. And nobody has said they wanted that, even the representative said they're not going for that. And so we have this policy that we can put in on the side that says, these are small town center. Acknowledging these are small town center, they must be built out with that eighty twenty split of residential to commercial or other uses. And maybe we can even put that in here, in that it's eighty percent residential and twenty percent everything else that's allowed within small town center.
So, uh, but the residential allows for mixed use. Neighborhood center allows for commercial uses that service neighborhoods up to one quarter mile away. But the reason I'm resisting here is because, you know, the goal, if you own property and you can commercialize the most, that is your best bang for your buck. I don't know about, are you telling me the policies will protect small town um, from overstepping? I, I, I'm a little nervous about going there because there are other designations, because we clearly want this to be light on the commercial side. That's why there is residential, that's why there's neighborhood center. So I know the developer and the attorney for the developer insists that the only possible direction we can go in, um, is small town center. The planning department even recommended a split. So I'm, I'm a little hesitant to hand over the entire thing as small town center when we know this whole parcel run by the same landowner. It can't be a mega mall, but it can be as close as you can get commercially to that. I, I'm assuming that is the, that is the intent by the landowner. I have to assume that. Um, so I'm just, how do we protect that from happening? Because everyone wants residential.
Uh, Vice Chair.
Chair, I have an idea. Let's defer this and then we'll wait till our next meeting, we'll get somebody on that reads and understands.
Okay, um, but I think to Dicos' point, maybe some of this is neighborhood center versus small town center. But we can, I see notes from some people. Okay, we're not going to be able to finish, hold on, please, please, decorum for the next few minutes. Um, okay, we are not going to get through this discussion tonight. We have a mama with a baby that needs attention at home. Um, we've gone over our time already, we have lots to chew on. I think we got some stuff done tonight, yay. Um, but we will have to pick up on this in our next meeting. And I would suggest everybody have a good read-through of the community plan and what each designation calls for, what each designation allows. Like take a good ponderance of all of this information, look through the policies and think about other policies that maybe could be modified to achieve the goals. And we'll have a productive and fruitful meeting two weeks from now. Okay, thumbs up, good stuff. Thank you, everybody, good job today.